Good afternoon. I will call to order the special city council meeting for Tuesday, September 9th. Any persons needing special assistance, please let us know. Also, please silence your cell phones so that the meeting can go on uninterrupted. We'll start with item number one, which is roll call.
Wilson?
Here.
Fuller?
Here.
Page?
Here.
Jansen?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Pittner?
Here.
Samuelson?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first item of business is item 3.1, which is to concur on the purchase price for flood buyout at 420 15th Street Southeast in the amount of $1,250,000. City Finance Director, do you have any comments on, I think you were involved in the discussion of this item?
Mr. Mayor, working with Mr. Breckie, this was what he indicated was his final and best offer, slightly above the parameters that the council had given, but we were very close at the point, so we're bringing it back for council approval. A couple of caveats here, Mr. Breckie wants to close on this property by the 16th of September, so we're kind of fast-tracking this a little bit. And then we would take up the buyout of the other property at a separate occasion.
Okay, with that explanation, is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Move to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Olson, discussion by the council.
Just briefly, if I could, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Breckie came and met with me over the last couple of days here and indicated he was pleased with the outcome. And so, you know, kudos to the Finance Director and Tom and the rest of the team that put that together. He's happy and provided we sort of execute now. He's, you know, we're coming out the back end where we should be, which is a good thing.
Any further discussion? Further discussions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Are we doing a roll call, Michaela, or are we doing our tablets?
We're doing e-vote.
E-vote, okay.
The motion passed unanimously.
Okay, motion passed. We're on to item 3.2, which is the 2026 budget preparation and guidance. And again, I'll turn to the City Finance Director. I think you maybe have some slides for us to look at to sort of tee up this discussion.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things, excuse me, to set the stage a little bit. I don't expect that we will have all items resolved by the end of day today, or our time that we have. I think our hope is that we get a more clear direction on where we want to land with the end product and then we can make some revisions to hopefully accomplish that goal. So I just want to set the stage a little bit graphically with some things of where we're at with the budget, starting at the dollars from last year, the levy from last year. Of course, we had the preliminary budget that was presented by the city manager. We have the changes that were proposed in the President's message. And I also included a slide for a data point for what the 25 mil levy plus 3% in growth looks like, just to kind of set the stage for, to get some parameters to take a look at.
Just wanted to set the stage a little bit, but graphically with some...
Okay, so this is the graph, 2025, this is what we levied for the 2025 budget, $24,68,032. The mil rate, I think, was about 96 and change, 97 mils. The $29,574,130 was what was proposed in the preliminary budget. And I would say that that is the maximum that would be allowed under the calculation. The $27,223,189, that would be reflective of the changes that are proposed in the President's message. That's where we would land with the amount that would hit the tax levy. And this $25,46,384, that would represent taking the 2025 levy plus the 3% calculation off of that number, plus the growth. So that just kind of gives us some guidance on what that looks like with the levy. And I'll bring up a spreadsheet here also that shows the calculations. So 25, we're at 97.11 mils. The preliminary budget landed us at 115.61. The changes for the President's message gets us down to 106.42. And then the 3% plus the growth lands us at about 97.91. Now, one thing I want to point out, you look at 97.91 versus the 97.11, and even my high school math, I can tell you that's not 3%. And the difference in, I just wanted to point out that is because the law says it's 3% of dollars and because the value of a mil has increased over time, that's why the rate does not reflect 3%. So it's a little bit of a nuance when you first look at it. I know that caught my attention, well, wait a minute, that's obviously not 3%. But it's because the limit applies to 3% in dollars, so that's where the difference comes in. The difference between the calculations here, the difference between the President's message and the 3% growth number. So if the guidance is to get to 25 plus the 3% growth, that means that we have to trim 2.176 million from the President's message recommendations to get to that number. And if we are going to go all the way back to the $2025 amount imposed from the President's message, that is 3.155 million in cuts. And then in context, from the preliminary budget that was proposed to the 3% plus growth, it's four and a half million and it's five and a half million if we go back to the 2025. So just a little context of where we're at and what's in front of us. Again, my hope is that we have some guidance from today, where we want that number to be. And then I think it's our job to kind of sift through things and figure out where we make those reductions, where it makes the most sense. There's been several items that have been floated around so far, things that we obviously would take into account and take a look at as well. So I think that's all I have in the way of a presentation. I'm just hoping that this is more of a discussion in context than we get some marching orders by the end of the day.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, bless him. So just a question, Dave. So looking at the 25 plus 3% plus growth with that number, is, can you just give us a little context of what that looks like? I mean, I did some quick calculations. It looks like to me, we got about a quarter of a million dollars, that's the growth portion of it, and the 3% is about the other roughly three-quarters of a million. So yeah, you're...
Yep, you're pretty much right on.
Okay. So again, the idea there is that our properties grew. So is that typically, that'd be new properties coming online, right? Because this is not growth of current properties, that's handled in the mil rate.
That is correct.
Right. So the 248 represents new properties coming online, and we always have access to that from a cap perspective. We always have access to that addition plus 3% of what the prior year or whatever base year we're using.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, well, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I'll maybe start us off with some additional discussions. One of the things I just wanted to say, I think this is a great way for us to start because I think it gives us the context of, you know, maybe those of us that would like to see us back close to 25, exactly what that looks like. And the other approaches are all laid out in front of us, so I appreciate that very much. One other thing I wanted to note for staff is that as I went back through the budget, you know, now my third, fourth, fifth times as I'm going through things, I am continually astounded by the wonderful work that was done. When we look at salaries and benefit numbers that are both under 2% growth each, we did some great work, or I should say you did some great work. And so I, you know, I think it's put us in a position where we have the ability to make the decisions that we need to make. We've got a range now to work with, and it's going to really be the consensus of the council that directs us forward from here. But the real heavy lifting to start bending the curve, as I've looked at it, has already been done. And so I just applaud the staff again. That's great work, that's been done to this point. And so, you know, so with that, I think, you know, I'm open or ready for, I guess, others to start making, you know, making motions on discussions on where we should go from here.
Alderman Fuller?
Thank you, Mark. So I guess the first thing I'd like to do is as we're looking at this, and I know we've talked about the VERF as one of the big things over the last year or so. But with the constraints in the budget, with trying to get us back to where we were, one of the first things I'd like to do is talk about just cutting out the VERF this year and maybe pushing it a year or two. I know there's going to be vehicles we have to replace. You're going to have to bring those to us and we're going to have to replace them. But the amount of money that we're putting away right now to start saving for replacing vehicles in the future, I don't think it's feasible. And while I think it's a great idea, if we had our druthers and weren't basically impacted by flood control and everything else that's going on, the state cap, but I think that's, in my mind, that's a good place to start because if we have to replace six vehicles this year and it costs us $300,000, that's a $2 million savings right there that we just incurred by not funding that VERF right away. So that's where I'll start. I'd like to make a motion that we cut the VERF budget.
There's motion and a second discussion.
If I could, Dave, do you have any thoughts on how that's going to break down? I mean, we're looking at 2.3 million there, but a bunch of that's coming from enterprise funds, so it's not directly 2.3 million to the property tax levy bottom line. Do you have, and if you want to take a look at it, we can kind of come back there. So I'll ask that as a first question. And then Tom and team, you know, Brian, can you guys give us an estimate of what it is that you need? Because part of me says, I remember Harold saying, "This doesn't fund what we would have normally purchased." So actually, we're starting ourselves a little bit behind. That's not to say that this motion isn't the right direction. We've got to talk that through, but I'm interested to hear from you guys what that would mean. What would you need to bring back for us to put in before October 6th to make sure that we're not setting you in a spot where you're in a bad place?
Mayor Jansen, Alderman, bless him. To get ourselves to, I guess, a more sustainable point when it comes to the VERF itself, we would actually need closer to about $6.1 million. That is, again, getting after all vehicles from the oldest, the 1957 vehicle types, all the way through the 2010. The VERF was originally intended to go ahead and dial that number back, give us a little bit more flexibility when it comes to availability of budgets, to allow us the opportunity, as you're seeing now with the 2.3 million dollar VERF funds that are available, to look at vehicles that need to be replaced that might be not as new as the 2010 vehicle type. So it allows us to move that pin. Looking over, I was actually pulling up the vehicles that were set to be replaced in 2026. And again, I'd have to go through this a little closer. But I'm seeing right now, just off of preliminary looks, there's just quite a few vehicles right now for each of the departments that are must-need vehicles. All of them have been identified as older vehicle types, and I'd have to run in the model to determine exactly what year group that would fall within. Right now, I believe with the 2.3 million dollars, we have roughly vehicles being replaced up to 2003.
So if I can continue, Mr. Mayor. So Brian, I understand that perspective on it, which is the new VERF lens looking forward. For me, I think the discussion we have in front of us, the discussion we have in front of us is whether to sort of stick with the past processes, which is to say, budget what you need, right? It really doesn't matter what you're replacing, it doesn't matter what year those come from. I understand that setting an arbitrary date would have a cost per year that we would be figuring out. But if we were to look back and instead say, well, no, we're going to bring in five patrol vehicles, we're going to bring in three 250 pickups, what does that number look like for what you guys would have wanted to do for '26?
Alderman, bless me at this time, I, Alderman, bless me... Alderman, bless me at this time, I wouldn't be able to give you that exact number, mainly because we'd have to go back through and look at who had programmed funding in in '24 for set-asides that were going to mature in '26. So Finance might be able to answer that a little more directly, but as of right now, I wouldn't be able to, without running the model, I wouldn't be able to tell you.
Okay. And so if I can continue, Mr. Mayor, you know, on the motion, I think, I think to a certain extent, this illustrates a little bit of my unease with this throughout, is that we don't know what that would look like. We're essentially saying, look, let's start setting money aside because we know we're going to need something. And we're starting down a path. My unease throughout has been that this costs us more than the status quo the moment we implement it, and it continues with that. So, you know, I'm going to support it, but what I think we need back, I think we need a list of what we need to add back into the budget. Because removing these dollars doesn't mean we don't have certain needs that we've got to fill, and we would need those prior to October 6th if this motion passes, okay? And then Dave, I don't know if you got some idea where we're...
I'm trying to bring this information up in comparison to last year to show what we budgeted for equipment replacement and focusing on governmental funds. So in the 25 budget, we had $2.4 million for capital equipment replacement. And for the VERF contributions for general fund, this year we're looking at 1.18 million. So with some context, there are some things in those capital accounts that can be included, other things that wouldn't be included in the VERF also. But I think the important part here is, is we're working through this VERF. What we have in there for this year isn't setting money aside for future years. This is what is going to get us the equipment that needs to be replaced in 2026. It's not setting aside money for future years. The number for that, to go with that program, is quite a bit higher.
But I think we're talking about two different baselines for how we do that, right? The baseline that's being discussed in the VERF is some type of year cutoff that is a starting point. It may not mean replace a vehicle from '99 because it's in great shape, but it does say as a cutoff point, here's what we're looking at, right? That, to me, is a completely different concept than, hey, we need these nine vehicles and four pieces of equipment, we would have budgeted them this way. But did I catch that right, though? If we had done it that way, you can see what we are planning for '26 in terms of the equipment? Is that in?
We don't have that detail built into the budget. We just have the contribution for each department that would go to the VERF. And I'll just point out for an example, we have a number here, and I'll pick on the fire department because it's a big number, because fire trucks are expensive. So when we look at the long-range plan to get those trucks up to date, essentially what we're saying is we need to start putting aside $347,000 a year to replace those trucks over their life expectancy to keep them up to date. That doesn't mean that we're going to spend $347,000 on a fire truck today. So in essence, this exercise, what we're trying to do is avoid these peaks and valleys where all of a sudden, if we're going to buy a fire truck and it's a million dollars, that we have this big spike in the funding that's needed to buy that piece of equipment. We're essentially trying to level-load the budget over time to provide for those equipment replacements.
Mr. Mayor? Sorry. I had said, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. Dave, just real quick, let's say the VERF wasn't in place and we had to go buy a million-dollar fire truck. How would we pay for it?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Fuller, we would have to come up with a funding source. So in the past, we've used grant funding, we've used combinations of reserves or sales tax funding, whatever was available if we had to do it in today's, you know, on the spot.
Right. We'd find another alternate source, or we could even bond it if we needed to, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Fuller, that would be an option. However, bonding in the future world for general obligation bonds will be a challenge due to the 3% caps.
Alderman Pittner.
So, again, and Dave, so again, this is, these are, a lot of these are funds that we would be, we would be placing into the budget, but now they're just centrally located in the VERF. Kind of, to my understanding, right? Each department's capital equipment is just being loaded into the VERF and then also budgeted for future years, like the fire station, correct? Fire department?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, you're correct. Again, it's a mechanism of level-loading the budget. The thought process is, is this funding is available in the VERF, and then there's a committee that reviews the requests that come for equipment that we go through, make sure it's necessary, that it, you know, it needs to be replaced, that it's the best avenue, and it comes up for recommendation. And then again, it would come back to council for approval before the purchase. So there's still a process that it will have to go through to decide what gets replaced with that funding.
If I may continue. You mentioned some of these are enterprise funds. Do you have a split of what is property taxes and what is enterprise funds?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, what I have brought up here is just the general fund departments and their VERF contribution.
So it looks like it's about half and half, is that...
Potentially, yeah, roughly.
And, if I may continue real quick. Just for the sake of our newest council member, probably drinking from the fire hose, no pun intended. Brian, do you want to give him an elevator pitch on the VERF and the concept of the VERF and what it's, what we're trying to accomplish by implementing something like this?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, yeah, so thank you for the opportunity to go ahead and talk a little bit about the VERF. Sir, the VERF, again, is the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund. So some of the big items that we are noticing is the trend itself for our acquisitions overall for the city. We are trending towards about $6.1 million in 2026 for expenditures on the acquisitions for much of the equipment that were being replaced through the various departments. So what the team has done over this past six to eight months is found methodologies essentially encapsulating the set-aside methodology of taking the total cost of the vehicle, spread out over the duration or lifecycle of that vehicle itself, and determine what we can go ahead and take from each of the department or set aside from each of those departments to build up that Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund. In essence, we understand that each department will not be utilizing it on a year-to-year basis. So what we would be able to do is capitalize on those additional funds in there from the departments that we're not utilizing it, and utilize those for those departments that did need it, that did have vehicles set for replacement. In essence, allowing us to drive down costs year-to-year, allowing us to level-load what we were looking to replace, but also give us a mechanism to review each of the vehicles that were in consideration for replacement.
If I can just add one thing, and I think this, I think, you know, Mike, you've talked, Alderman Blessing has touched on this before, right? We have this surplus at the end of the year, we throw it into the general fund. For me, implementing the VERF allows us to, again, have some future planning so that we aren't just throwing it in the general fund because, to the point the Finance Director, Lakefield, says, you know, if a fire truck goes down and in a pump truck, something goes down, we tap into the general fund anyway. That is our VERF right now. We have a VERF, it's just under the general fund. So again, for me, this allows us to be forward-thinking. This allows us to plan three, five, 10 years out with some of these large capital expenditures and falls in line with the principles that, Mike, one of the things that you've tried to implement at the council level is, we need to be forward-thinking, we don't want to overtax. We want to make sure that when we are taxing people, their dollars are being accounted for. You know, hey, we know that we're going to need a new pump truck in five years. Let's start budgeting for it now. And it might look like we're setting, we're taxing people an extra $347,000, but in essence, it's just smart budgeting, in my opinion. It's just, it's planning for the future. So that's kind of my thought. I get the thought, right, of, we're kind of have the VERF already, it's just the general fund. But now this identifies funds, allows us to identify and earmark funds for those future expenditures that we know we're going to have at some point, so.
One of the other elements about the VERF approach that is not trivial is that when, when these are done individually by departments, there really isn't a central control mechanism or a central clearinghouse for vehicle that, you know, maybe is only used seasonally by one department, but that could be used at other times by a different department. And the other part of it is, of course, the transfer of, you know, a vehicle from one use where it's absolutely essential that it function, and it goes out of town, or what, you know, all kinds of contingencies versus something that really is used by somebody who's always in town, and if it breaks down, they're not far away and they can get a vehicle from somebody else or use their own for that morning or whatever. So I, you know, I think we shouldn't lose that insight on kind of what's intended here. Rob, you were up next.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So one of the things I guess I want to just say is, as Mike said and pointed out, half of this, 2.3 million, is enterprise funds and half is property tax. So the budget that we've proposed and that Mark and...
So the budget that we've proposed and that Mark and those guys brought forward has a three and a half million dollar property tax increase. This is literally one-third of that. If we didn't fund that portion of it, we would still have the enterprise funds to fund the vehicles and the different things that we need to buy this year, but we wouldn't have to increase that property tax on everybody in this community by not funding that portion, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Go ahead.
One thing that would be included in that would be the new police cars for the year. So if all of that funding was cut, there would be no police cars. There would be, none of that stuff would be included in the budget.
Continue. If we took a budget amendment for the police cars like the chief needed, we approved them, they're buying them. If we did a budget amendment or if you use the enterprise funds or can you not use enterprise funds to buy the police cars?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Fuller, the mechanism to use enterprise dollars to fund general fund expenditures would be through the transfer to general fund and there are statutory limits on how much you can transfer annually. So it would depend on which enterprise fund you wanted to take it from, how much is available, and then we'd have to determine if that money's available to be transferred.
Alderman Blessin.
So just, I think, oh, there you go. So just, just respond a little bit to what you were talking about. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the other steps that we have done because to me, this is all a funding mechanism and it sets off a set of processes that would occur, but this does not replace our fleet manager. We have a fleet manager whose job it is to do all the things I think you were talking about, Mr. Mayor, to determine where we have places where we can move vehicles around. We're funding a position that that is their primary focus. And so I don't think the decision we're talking about right now gives any of that up. It simply says the funding mechanism we're talking about, we want to do differently. And so again, I'm going to say the same thing. I'm going to vote yes, but I'm going to ask you guys, we've got to know what we have to add back in because we're not funding it the way we have in the past if it passes.
Further discussion, Alderman Pittner.
Brian, point of clarification, we talked about 2010 being the cutoff year. Is that an automatic trigger for replacement or is that if a vehicle's running well or a piece of equipment's running well, we maintain that?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, negative. So right now, what we're trying to do is identify via national standards what the optimal life cycles are for the vehicles before they start increasing costs when it comes to the maintenance side of the house. Right now, we do have the average age of our fleet anywhere between 12 to 15 years, which is far exceeding the national standard for much of the vehicle types we operate with, which is again, driving up those maintenance costs on the backside on sustainment piece. So right now, with the initial intent, again, if we were to go up to $6.1 million, which is I don't think going to be possible this year, it would allow us to get through the inventory up through 2010. That still does not bring us to the point where we're actually adhering to national standard recommendations, okay? We would need to go through another couple of years and iterations to be able to get ourselves to a point where now we have a newer fleet and we're less reliant on those maintenance and sustainment operations on the backend.
Yeah, and so just to add something to that because, you know, all the stuff from the last conversation on this is coming back. Just to clarify again for everybody, while it is better for us maintenance-wise to have a newer fleet, we are not talking about reducing staffing, we are not talking about reducing actual costs related to maintenance. It allows them to maybe focus on things that make more sense and that's a good thing in general terms, but there are no cost savings from that side of what we're doing that are expected.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one.
City Finance Director.
One other point of clarification, and I just wanted to point out that this is the first step in implementing this VERF process. So when we initially started talking about this, I think the assumption was that it was going to be easy. All of the equipment automatically flowed through the VERF and the VERF held ownership of all of the vehicles. There's a lot of complexities that come with that. For example, in enterprise funds, we have to account for the cost. So when they have their, a piece of equipment, it's depreciated in the enterprise fund. So when the VERF owns it, we have to cost that back to the enterprise fund in some fashion. So it's a lot more complex than it looks like on the surface. This is the first step in moving to a centralized, like a motor pool for lack of a better term, where we have a centrally managed equipment pool. Part of the challenge that we have is each department has ownership of their equipment and once they give that piece of equipment up, then it's a challenge to get that back in the fleet. So the tendency is not to want to give up that equipment. We hang on to it and I would argue in some cases too long, so it's beyond its useful life by the time somebody else gets a crack at it. So the attempt here is to be more efficient at managing that so we can move those assets around. First of all, we may not, we may find out we don't need as many vehicles as we thought we did before because we can better utilize them in more of a motor pool type of situation and more effectively manage those because it'll be a centralized operation. We have somebody that has knowledge of the whole fleet, they'll have data to support. You know, every once in a while, you're going to get one that because of the use or maybe it just turned out to be an oddball and it's problematic and maybe that needs to be traded out before something that's older or has more miles on it. That is something that somebody else needs to make the decision of. And I think that was the thought process behind setting it up this way, that we have a committee reviewing all of the requested purchases. We have a fleet manager that's looking at what needs to be replaced and signing off on that is the number one priority, this piece of equipment, so we can be a little more efficient in that process.
Alderman Samuelson.
Thank you. I'm going to support this motion. I don't see that it, in the long run, it saves money. It's just, it's putting money away. I don't agree with looking at vehicles just by age. That's something that's brought up a lot. I have a 2008 Toyota pickup that's got 60,000 miles on it. I don't think I'm going to get rid of that just because of the age. So I think all that has to be taken into consideration and some of the stuff that we've been talking about, centralizing motor pool, I don't know why VERF has anything to do with that because we do have a fleet manager that's supposed to be doing that. I think we need to get that probably all situated before we start adding expenses with that is my opinion.
Alderman Pittner.
Brian, can you explain, like you say, you said it'd be about $6 million to fully fund the VERF this year? What's the bell curve look like on that as far as you make an influx, an investment into the VERF fund and then would you, do you see that taper down to be a million dollars a year to maintain that, that turnover once we have what, you know, once we fall in line with best practices? What does that look like?
May I just answer, Alderman Pittner? So by footing, I guess, the bulk of the bill upfront, it does create kind of a sine wave-esque type approach with decreasing costs in the out years. It looks like from the initial analyses on this one, if we were to fully fund it to 6.1, 6.2 million dollars, it would allow us to become whole within about three to four years, meaning we're going to be able to level load out what the VERF would need to cover to ensure that we're maintaining balance within our fleet itself. So basically, replacement cycles per lifecycle timelines that are actually identified nationally.
If I may continue, Mr. Mayor.
Continue.
So by doing this way, what do you see as far as long-term, as far as when we are leveled out with the investment of what we're making, you know, how many years until we are level loaded this as far as a budget item?
Alderman Pittner, it's hard to say. With, basically moving that, I guess, field goal, I guess, so to speak, or that pin, it's hard to determine exactly how quickly we would get our fleet whole. I would suspect at about $3 million per year, it would probably take us anywhere between five to seven years. Again, that's just, I'm speculating at this point. It really depends on the type of vehicles, the type of maintenance, the type of preventative maintenance we're actually putting into these vehicles, meaning it does cross over into the FTEs for our shop, making sure the inspections are being done. But I would say probably safe bet by five to seven years before we are seeing benefit from this.
Just give my thoughts.
Alderman Pittner.
At this time, I'm not saying we, is there, is there a level of, I guess, Brian, is there a level of reduction in funding this in the, is there a benefit? Do we still gain some ground on a reduction in the general fund contribution to the VERF?
Alderman Pittner, in this case, we developed this program in a way to give council an opportunity to review based off of their priorities, what needed to be addressed for that upcoming year. Again, that also factors in available financing, available funding for it as well. So beyond that, I couldn't really speculate, sir. I would, I would just say that we have put in processes and review mechanisms to ensure that we are truly identifying a bona fide date, making sure that as Alderman Samuelson highlighted, that we're not just replacing a vehicle just because of its age. We do have those, within AssetWorks, 12 mechanisms or 12 performance factors that we are reviewing to ensure that those vehicles can either continue to be sustained at a low cost to the city or if they are a critical item that is actually costing the city more than just replacing that vehicle itself.
Just my final thoughts. Again, I probably won't support the motion just because again, I think these are, these are funds that we're levying anyway. These are, these are expenses that we're going to have anyway this year, replacing fleet vehicles and things like that. I think this falls in line with best practices I do with this with my business. I have a capital fund that I know when I need to replace. I budget for vehicles. It might not be the same every year, but I budget for vehicle replacement, equipment replacement so that I don't have those big spikes and I don't, I'm prepared for those large capital expenditures within my business. I think it falls in line with best practices. I think it allows us to shed light on what to expect the upcoming year. So again, I probably won't support it at this point because again, it seems like we are accounting for what we're expecting this year, not future, future years or things like that. It's just falling in line with best practices, setting us up for future.
Further discussion. Further discussion. Seeing none, we have a motion. Let's vote.
Ballot motion. Move all vehicle and equipment from the general fund. If the motion passed, four to three votes said from Jasper Alderman Pittner.
Alderman Blessin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to bring a motion that we move all open positions to the city manager's budget and apply a factor to that to reduce the dollars budgeted for those open positions.
Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Samuelson, discussion.
If I can continue, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So again, the idea here, and Dave, I think I maybe saw that you had some of the information that we could give, just to give the council some context here. At the state of North Dakota, they've implemented a process and I don't, I don't pretend to be an expert in that process, but my general understanding of it is that open positions at the state of North Dakota are moved to the OMB budget and as they are, so then they are not budgeted within the departments where they would normally exist. The OMB budget then is where they are managed in terms of vacancy. And the idea is that vacancy can be managed across the board and a factor can be applied to it because at any one time, and Dave, I don't know if you have any idea what that would be off the top of your head, the vacancy we run is saving us a significant amount of money. And so just right now, the dollars that we have and the information that I got from staff is about 2.7 million in terms of budgeted dollars plus benefit costs that are sitting open right now. And my thought would be to move those positions to the city manager's budget, apply a factor, I would suggest something along the lines of 60%. That would assume that we're going to have some type of vacancy in those of 40% during the next year and then use that number as our budgeted amount. And as those positions are filled, the city manager would vet them and bring them to council for budget amendments to move them back to the departments and to have them paid for. So that's my motion. I think, I think it parallels what the state is doing to handle this exact same circumstance and to give us, you know, some additional buffer in how we handle the vacancy throughout our organization.
Alderman Pittner.
So Mike, just, your concept is we're going to approve these and then we're going to, we're going to approve and then authorize 60% of the funding.
Yeah. So the idea would be this set that Dave has on the screen right now would be moved to the city manager's budget. So this list, and again, I'm open to discussions. For example, the city manager is on this list, I think we'll have that filled within a month here, okay? So the idea, I don't think we need to necessarily move that one over the way we would, but I think as an ongoing way of doing this every year, when we get to this point, we determine what that looks like, we move them to the city manager's budget, we apply a factor so we don't charge the public for vacancy and then as they're filled, we move them back over and we fund them. And that, that back and forth, sorry, that back and forth, I think captures the vacancy savings that we're already seeing. We're not spending it today, but we are charging the public for it, especially when it's, when it's general fund spending.
Just a point of clarification then, does this include, how many officers had we funded versus authorized? And does this include, does this mess with that number?
So Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, that's one thing that wasn't taken into account with this calculation. We have a number of those police officer positions that are vacant, but they aren't funded in the 25 budget and aren't included in the 26 budget as well. I took this information and I highlighted in yellow the enterprise funds, so those wouldn't have impact on the general fund property taxes. I actually have a couple of different iterations of this. I highlighted in orange, that's a part-time person, so I would want to verify the benefits cost of that. The blue, those are positions that are vacant currently. For example, Alderman Blessin said the city manager, we anticipate that'll be filled shortly. There's a fire captain position, chief, I'm sure that would be filled this week. So the vacancy is going to be very short-lived. The library director is another one of those positions. Not only would they be filled quickly, but they don't come up very often or become vacant, but when we get all of those subtracted out, we're, we're down to about $542,000 that would be general fund impact. And then, I mean, we certainly can do that for these other positions too. Then it'll be critical that we manage those budgets and that will be important when we go to fill these positions that we make sure we've accounted for the PTO buyouts, everything at the end when that person exits, that we don't fill it too soon because we'll be short of funding potentially on some of these positions.
I will say this, this is an interesting concept and I had, I had given some thought to this myself, considering that, you know, this is sort of an annual occurrence where with, you know, short of 500 employees, you know, it stands to reason that there are a number of positions throughout the year that go unfilled for a period of time during the recruitment and waiting for the new person to start, period and so forth. So, you know, in concept, certainly it's a way to sort of manage that funding and kind of meter those positions to, you know, where they're being paid to people who are working. And I guess that makes, that makes a certain amount of sense. But other discussion, Michaela.
I just want to clarify, is to move all vacant positions to the city manager's budget and apply a factor to this question possibly to make this a budget?
Correct. City Finance Director.
I don't want to seem selfish, but I think that adds a little bit of complexity when we look at, when we get to next year budget or 28 budget when we're looking back. So much of our stuff, we're dependent on historical data, so I think we're creating some complexity by moving all of the vacant positions to the city manager budget. Generally, I think I'm, I'm in agreement with the concept that we can move forward, but I would prefer if we kept them in each department's budget so we can call them out so we easily can identify them when it comes next year. And I just know from my own perspective, I'll have a difficult time remembering all the details next year.
So you're feeling like it would be, it would be easier to leave them in the department's budget but track them in
but track them in this kind of a, with this kind of an understanding? Or, or reduce those departmental budgets in order to, how, how would, how would that work actually then?
Mr. Mayor, maybe I can just actually show you. I'll bring up, I'll pick on the police department because I know they have items in their budget where we've handled this. So I'll just bring that information up here relatively quickly. And I'll show you what it looks like in the detail for the budget. And that information can flow forward so you have access to it the next year. So I'll just bring up the regular employees. So we list out all of the detail. And when we get down here far enough, you will see the ones that are unfunded. When we get towards the bottom here, unfunded 11 sworn patrol officers. And we put it in as a negative number. So this would be the opportunity, we would do something similar to that. Whatever multiplier or factor we had applied to it, we'd put it in as a, a negative item to offset what we normally would levy for that. And then we have that detail that's available, so it's easily called out. So next year, when we go to look at historical information, it's like, oh yeah, we had, you know, six unfunded positions or six empty positions at budget time. That's why we didn't fund as much as we normally would. If they're fully staffed the next year, obviously we want to make sure that we appropriated accordingly.
Alderman Blessam.
Mr. Mayor, so I'm not, in concept, I'm not, I'm not opposed to what you're talking about, Dave. Although I will say that there is a magic to why the state does it with OMB. And there is a magic in my mind to why we would do that with the city manager's office. And so, Tom, I'd like to hear from you, unique position in the interim role. But if you give it your thought to how you want to both have the, the decision-making side of this, which is important, right? Because it's going to force an evaluation. It's going to make sure that we're looking at that each time. But also balancing certainly, we want to make it workable. I mean, that's not the intent is to make it hard to do either.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Blessam, appreciate that. So that, my first kind of question initially is, we're not necessarily talking about just the current vacant positions, are we? Because let me, let me run by. My, my thought was, you know, I've never worked for a, a large organization that had 100% of the positions filled 100% of the time. It just doesn't happen, right? So whatever our historical onboard rate is, kind of, and maybe even department by department. But even if we went, let's say, and we split it, general fund, enterprise, we could split this whole thing up. However, we could slice and dice it. But I'm just throwing out a number because I don't think we have the number yet, do we, Kelly? Okay. But I, but I asked for like month over month from 2024 to 2025. What is our average vacancy rate? Or, or flip it, our average onboard rate, you know, which way? So let's just say for, for sake of argument, it's, our average vacancy rate is 10%. And then if we could work with finance, we really, it's, okay, it's 10%, but, but what's the dollar amount too, right? Because it's difference, you know, you have directors, you have, you know, entry-level positions. And kind of manage to that, right? So we manage to that line item in the budget. So if, if we say that's 90%, so we don't budget for 100% of the full-time employees being, you know, always there every day of the year and getting their full-time benefits. We, we manage to whatever that number is that we present to you as an option to consider, you know, and for this sake of argument, let's just say it was 90%. So that goes in the budget. It's 90% of what we, what we originally put in the 2026 budget, right, vice 100%. And, and then we, we build the process to do exactly what you're, you're talking about, which we have been doing and it's getting, there, there's more vigor to it. But this will, this will be a forcing mechanism that there's even more vigor to that. And that analysis and the no kidding drive of, okay, tell me exactly why. And, and as we all know, that we're, those of us who've worked in large organizations for a long time, I mean, change is hard, okay? And a lot of times it's because, you're going to hate this, right? We've always done it that way, right? And sometimes, and, and I'm not pointing anybody out, but in the last six, eight months, sometimes there's the panic button of we need to fill that position first. So I, I will tell you that even I have approved some position fills on behalf of the former city manager in the last six to eight months, that it, it was okay this time. And it's the warning order of next time, you, you have to start considering what would you do without that position? Because, again, you know, there's a little bit of change management here and who moved my cheese? But that, that's part of the process. So as we go forward, what I would like to do, Alderman Blessam, is to be able to give you all a number based on real data and then present, you know, something to, that, that I think is manageable, whatever that number is. I mean, I will, I will share the data and this is what, what I think is, is something that we could pursue for the 2026 budget.
Alderman Blessam.
If I could, Mr. Mayor. So, so between, between Tom and Dave and Kelly, can we get to the point where, because, you know, maybe the mechanism is just what you're showing here, Dave, but it's by department, right? And it's, it, there's always an item in each department's budget, which is either historical vacancy for that department or it's broad across the organization, whatever makes sense there. But I, I think this approach looks really good as long as we get the other side of it, which is the vigor around reapproving as the vacancies come up, right? I think I've said this multiple times, but every opening is an opportunity in my mind. Opportunity for, do we need it at all? Do we need it a different way? How are we going to use this gift we've been given to adjust the organization to the future? And I think if we're doing that really well, then the mechanism, I think we want to do what makes sense. So if, if, if it, if it makes sense for us to go back and do a little work based on this concept and come back with what that should look like, I'm perfectly open to that and I'm happy to, I'm happy to withdraw the motion for now. But I, I'm hopeful that my colleagues agree that this concept is going to be a winner for us and is going to help us do this better going forward.
I, I've, Alderman Olson.
Oh, okay, I'll do that. Thank you. And just a related question to this, because I, we were looking at vacancies, but there have been a few positions that have been requested to be added. And I don't know if that would be considered on the list or considered in your motion because that, it's something that, you know, is, is, they're looking at this information. We need to have that too, because if we are considering funding new positions, we need to know what would be approved and, and what the number for that would be as well.
I guess, you know, in thinking about this a little bit more, I think that the approach of getting historical data so that we understand, not just in this instant, but, because that number could be high or low depending on what's going on right now.
Well, yeah, we have multiple director level positions.
Yeah. But if we look at data over time as the city, city manager is suggesting, we would end up with whatever that average, you know, I guess nominal number is and, and probably be able to do exactly what you're talking about with that number and, and deal with it in the budgets and the position that, that the city finance director is talking about. So, so do we want to just give that direction, Alderman Blessam, to come up with that and then, and then bring it back to us? Or do you want to continue with your motion?
No, I think, I think that's good. So what I'll do is I'll modify the motion to provide direction to bring back a proposal for us to approve in time for this budget.
Okay. And who seconded that? Scott did, you good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
So, yeah, to, the, what I would like the staff to do is to bring back a proposal for how we implement a vacancy-based factor to adjust our staffing dollars. And, and I, I'm, I'm open to the mechanisms as long as we don't give up the sort of vigor and, and oversight that we've got coming.
Just a quick question. Dave, do you, do you have an idea what that dollar amount is? I, I know you pulled it up and I might have missed it, but just for my notes? Because again, I just, I'll, I'll add this. I, I, we started to do this in 2021 with the police department by authorizing, but not funding those positions. And I think it's a fine practice as long as there's, again, some historical data to, to support so that we're not, we're not surprised we have a really good hiring year and, and vacancies get filled and all of a sudden we're, there's a shortfall.
So, Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, I started working on this a little bit this morning, but this is somewhat of the approach. We broke this down, you know, with what we have in the budget this year, original budget, revised budget, actuals going back to, I believe, 2023 by each department. So we look at some historical information, you know, and try to come up with a factor. Obviously, some, some departments, just by the nature of the work, have a higher degree of turnover than others. So it, it most likely would be something that we would apply on a department-by-department basis to come up with that number. I mean, we can, we can come up with something and, again, that's kind of reading the tea leaves a little bit. That doesn't mean that next year's actuals will follow, follow exactly, but it gives us a starting point to make that decision and, and to trim those budgets down. A key component of that is going to be to manage that budget going forward. And one of the big items that will come into play is going to be PTO buyouts that come into that. So that is going to be something that needs to be managed and they have to pay attention to keep us on track or else we'll end up with a big problem at the end of the year.
And if I could, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Blessam.
So just to, just to clarify on that point quick, because that was something that, that sort of exploded in my head when I saw the data at first as well. We're not just talking about departure PTO payouts. We pay PTO out yearly. And, and, you know, I know that this was part of the transition to PTO. And there's a lot that went into that. And I, believe me, I do not want to revisit that at this exact moment. But I think it's important for the entire council to understand that this is an ongoing big cost for us. And it also disincentes the exact thing we're trying to incentivize, which is for people to take their time. They need time away, but they can actually get a great big Christmas bonus every year if they don't. And again, I realize that was part of how it was negotiated and put together and all that. And so I get that. But I, that, I just want to clarify that that is what we're talking about with that PTO adjustment. Yeah.
And, and Mr. Mayor and Alderman Blessam, in, I, I use the police department as an example in this. They get a little bit of a free pass because they have been chronically short of staff. And even though we have not funded all of their positions, they are still trending below their salary line item. So, and being as short as they are, opportunities to utilize PTO, it's a lot more difficult because of the staffing needs. So there are some exceptions to that, but that's part of the managing that. If we're fully staffed, you know, 90% of the year, we shouldn't have big buyouts at the end of the year. And you won't have the budget to accommodate it at the end of the year either. So that's where it comes down to being able to manage that budget.
If I could, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And, and so just, just one final point on this. You know, we've, we've had a few discussions over the past year or so about our levels of reserve and the money that we hold there. And one of the things that I'll continue to beat the drum about a little bit is that if we're going to have the ability to be at high levels of reserve, which I believe we are, that opens up the door for this, these opportunities, okay? That allows us to be a little more aggressive in vacancy. Maybe that's accounting for 94% occupancy rather than 95, okay? It's, I'm talking about little amounts because we hold that money in reserve. If we had gone forward with new guardrails and really tightened things up on reserves, then yeah, we got to be really careful in each and every budget. What I don't want is both things at once. I don't want high levels of reserve and extra conservative nature in each budget because that just adds up to more and more piles of money around the table. And that's not what I'm looking for. I want the right piles of money.
Alderman Olson.
So one other point that just, I just thought of now in, in this, we can consider vacancies, but we also do need to realize the cost because in, you know, using the police department as an example again, poor Chief Wright, he's gonna be a finger, finger-point animal all the time. But obviously there are services that need to be provided. And so when there's a vacancy, then we're paying overtime. And so those numbers need to be calculated in as well because we don't want to underfund that and not allow him to be able to pay overtime when it's necessary.
Okay. So we have a modified motion.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Everybody clear on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, let's vote on the motion. Further discussion. Alderman Fuller.
Mr. Mayor, yes, thank you. All right. The, the next one I want to kind of look at. Dave, can you help me here? 43040, which is consultants, and 43300, which is other professional services. Help me understand the difference between those two. What's a consultant versus a other professional service?
I'll just open this up and show you some examples of what's in each one. It was 43040, correct?
43040 and 43300, yeah.
So the consultants here, we have examples, surveys, salaries, or salary survey, employee engagement. This is in the consultants line item. Community survey facilitator. IT services. Parking management contract, aviation business consultant, flash parking contract. Okay, so that was the consultant and the other one was other professional services?
Yep.
43.
300.
Background checks. The bonded financial advisor for issuing bonds. Drug and alcohol testing, medical exams. So it's other things that we would contract out, language interpretation services.
Okay.
So it's a, a bit of a nuance.
Fair enough. And, and, and the reason I'm asking is because when I look at this this year, we took 305,000 off the consultants and then we moved 282,000 into OPS. Now, I guess my question would be, knowing that other professional services or background checks, some of those different things like you're just showing, what would be the 133% increase in that? I mean, that's kind of confusing to me. And then as a follow-up to that question, can you tell me in 2024? Because I went back and I was trying to look, 24 and 25 budgets, what we budgeted versus what we used. Can you give me a percentage of use for the budgeted item for 2024? And where we're at year-to-date 2025?
For which object code?
For either one.
Okay. This is the other professional services, so I can just scan through here quick to find out the big difference. So here's one right here that is a significant change. It's the ADA contract with Service Basin, $300,000. So my guess is that is the bulk of that change? Because that is something that is new, the new funding versus last year.
Just given that category, Dave, 43300, can you tell me then where we're at year-to-date as to what we budgeted for '25? And then at the end of '24, how much we used of our actual '24 budget?
Okay, so for 2025, the original budget for other professional services was 212,464. That's been modified by amendment up to 310,705. And I think a bulk of that was the ADA services with Service Basin. Year-to-date, we have used 120,000 of that budget. In 2024, the original budget was 142. The actual number was 166. So there were some budget amendments in '24. We actually spent more than originally was anticipated in the budget.
You show me that for the consultants then as well, 43040?
Same type of thing. Last year, the original budget was 2.1 million, just short of 2.2 million. The original budget for '26 is 1.8. The revised budget for '25 actually increased over the original budget. Year-to-date, we spent one, just under 1.3. And '24, the original budget was just under 1.7, and we spent 1.859. So there were some budget amendments in '24 as well to get to that number.
So I, I guess my question on both of those, like '25 actuals, we have some fairly high numbers in the '25 revised budgets. And '25 actuals, we're two-thirds of the year, way through the year, and we've only used about 50% of that. Are we going to see that jump that much in the next three to four months? Like, is this all late-year stuff that's going to hit, or are those going to be items we budgeted too much for and we don't necessarily, we're going to have, just throw it back in the general fund?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Fuller, just a couple items that jump out, and this is partly in my budget. And I think this is in a project for software, our software implementation consultants that was part of our ERP project. We still have some modules to, yet to be implemented or to be updated. So that will be part of that. It's tied up in the project, so either it'll be spent out or it'll eventually revert back to the, the general fund. It won't be spent. So that's an, an significant amount that's in the '25 budget. Here's an example that we haven't spent anything yet. Oh, that's cut. I'd have to go back to the '25 budget to get the detail for that.
All right, well, I, and I guess I appreciate it, Dave. I mean, I just was, I'm trying to find out. We use a lot of money in consultants and other professional services every single year. And I mean, I know our people, we, we hear it all the time, that we have professionals in the city that we need to trust them. So I guess my question is, is there any way to dial back some of this consultant stuff, guys? Where we're handling it within the city and, and we don't have to hire outside people to do it all the time? I mean, you know, it's, those two numbers right there, you know, you're, you're talking about $1.6 million again. And while I understand some of it is absolutely required and necessary, I'm wondering if all of it is. If there's another way we can go about this where, you know, Lance or Steph or whoever it may be, some of the guys in the city can actually handle some of this stuff instead of having to bring on consultants?
Mayor Janzer? So Mayor Janzer, Alderman Fuller, it's a great question, right? And, and I think, you know, sometimes the easy answer is, the simple one, is that we really don't have that competency, okay? And we really know we need outside consultant work, right? You know, I think Lance talked one time about, you know, we don't have bridge experts, right? So we got that one. Other times, it's, it's really, some of it is a zero-sum game that we are outsourcing for one reason or another. Not that we don't have the talent on the team to do that, but it would require that person to do, you know, project A versus project B. But the question is the question that we always should have in the back of our mind. Like, we realistically, before we hit the easy button and just say, let's go with consultant A, consultant B, because again, that's what we've always done, is, okay, what's our, you know, an annual work plan, our annual workload? What's our plan for next year? What is everybody really going to be doing? And, and some of that potentially could be brought back in-house versus outsourcing. What can we bring back in-house? So that, I think, is a challenge to the team that, you know, that we can take on and, and look at it that way, just like we're going to do as we review individual positions that we need on the team and, and do position description review. You know, and if I could, just to revert back a little bit, that's important, too. When we have a vacant position, we're challenging everybody to look at the position description, because some of our, some of our position descriptions are truly dated, truly dated, where it's not necessarily the competencies and skill sets that we need in this day and age. So we're looking at that as well.
Alderman Fuller.
So I guess, Tom, then, to that response, do you guys want me to make a motion for you guys to bring something back and say, hey, this is what we think we can honestly revert back or cut out of these consultants and other professional services? Or, or, I mean, is that something you just want to work on as a group and bring back to us? Because I, I'd like to see some tangible numbers before we put it into a budget or, or before we go through the finalized budget, to see if there's anywhere we can save. Because again, let's say we can cut consultants back $400,000 and the other one $100,000, just as rough numbers. It's a half million dollars. Again, we don't have to fund, more than likely through a property tax raise, right? What, what we're trying to get to is, we don't want to lose people, right? I'd, I'd rather keep city staff employed, because I know there's been a number of positions that have been opted to be cut. I'd rather keep city staff employed than a consultant on the outside where maybe we can handle that inside. And, and so I guess that's my question to you. Do you want a motion? Or do you guys want to work on it and try and bring it back to us that way?
Alderman Fuller, and, and Dave, just a quick question. What's that total, what's the total amount between those two? Okay, so, you know, I, I think we certainly, I mean, there's a few things that the department heads are already gathering for, right? I mean, to be realistic, here the next few days, so I, I don't mind adding this to the list at all. I don't mind adding this to the list. That'll make us do a deeper dive and, and pull out our pencils and sharpen them up a little bit. But to that, again, I want to, I want to, you know, go back a bit. And I appreciate the no cuts in personnel. But again, I, I think as we go forward, as positions become vacant, we're going to be looking hard at some of these position descriptions. And they're not necessarily, you know, the last thing I want to do is take a, I'm, I'm just making something up here, but I don't want to take a position that's graded out as a, a 60 and come back and tell you, we need a 90. That's not my intent. But we have done some, some modification in some positions over the last three months, and there's some, there is some increase, and you've seen some of those. We had a public safety business analyst for fire department, and I think we had a, a business analyst position for, for Public Works. We're looking at doing a similar position that Chief Frye has asked for, so that's going to come forward. You can see the common theme there, the word analyst. And in, in, in my background, you know, that we're not talking to systems analysts with IT. We're talking people that have the skill set when we're talking things in the process improvement world that they can get after some of these things that we've talked about. I know we talked about this last year. We, you all approved that we brought in Raftellus and did some training, and we got a good initial cohort. But to get to be a more efficient and hopefully more effective organization, we need more of that. That's bluntly, that's my candid response, you know, as your interim city manager, we need more of that. So as we go forward with some vacancies, we're going to be looking at adding those skill sets, I bet.
Alderman Fuller.
And, and I appreciate that, Tom. And, and what I was talking about when I said city staff is I mean active people in the city. I know there's a number of positions that we have lined out that we may be cutting. And what I, what I was referring to is I would rather cut a consultant than somebody currently working for the city. Now, I appreciate that you guys are looking over every job, every job description of every job that may be open or anything. I think that is a wonderful thing to do, so I applaud you guys on that. But I, I was looking at people where, you know, because I think Chief had in there, hey, you know, we talked about cutting this lieutenant position or whatever it was, and I know Mark and, and they added it back with the president's budget. But again, rather than fund more property tax or having to levy more property tax to pay for those things, is there other areas where we can consult? Or, or we can cut, such as consultants or OPS? And so then I guess I'll just make that motion. If you guys in your meetings and everything could take that on and look at if there's any efficiencies. And again, I realize sometimes hiring somebody from outside the city is the efficiency that we're looking for, and I get it. So if that's the case, that's the case. But I would like to make the motion for you guys to, to look at consultants and other professional services and see if there's anywhere in there we can cut that down a little bit to, to start to alleviate some of the, the property tax burden.
Okay, there's a motions there, second. Second by Alderman Blessam. Discussion of the motion. Alderman Olson.
Thank you. I guess the concern that I have with this motion is that for several weeks, our department heads did an exercise in finding budget cuts, and they brought them to us. And a lot of them were very bare-bones cuts. It was difficult for us to see. And many of them did not put a, a cut of consultant in there. So my assumption is that they still find them important to their department and the workings of their department. If I'm misunderstanding that, then I certainly would want to hear from department heads. But I think they put in things that they felt they could cut, even though it was painful, and oftentimes it was not the consultants.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. Excuse me, and I appreciate that, Lisa. I, I think you're right. I think they did make some cuts. But one of the things, and, and there may be times where we cut out, say, $600,000, and they need to come back to us to get that consultant or that, whatever they may need. What I'm simply suggesting is that if we can cut this back a little bit so we don't have to levy it or don't have to find a funding source for it, maybe it's a little harder to spend if you have to come and ask counsel for it rather than it just sitting there. I mean, I think of my kids all the time, right? If they got money in their bank, they want to go spend it. That's just kind of human nature. If, if it's not there, then they have to come and say, Dad, can I do this? Or can I get, do some work to make this money? And so that's all I'm trying to get at. I have no problem if we cut out 500,000 and they come back to us in three months and say, hey, there's 400,000 here we got to take a look at. Sure, we'll look at it then. But at least we got to, we get to have the conversation and decide, is this the most appropriate use of the money or can we do something else, so?
Airport Director.
Some of our consulting things are contractually obligated for us. So it would be very challenging to lower our consulting fees because we already have contracts that are in existence and, and ongoing through 2026 and, and beyond. In particular, Laz is in that consulting, even though they're not really consultants, they manage our parking lot. And it's the way, the gap of accounting in, I'll, I'll let, I'll let the experts talk about that. But the more they make, the more revenue we make in the parking lot, the greater that expense in that line item will be. And we may go over budget in that line item expense, but it's because we're making more income than we projected.
Thank you. Tom, with this ex, with this exercise, if we could just have the breakdown of, you know, if we're not going to do the consulting, what projects may or may not get done? What's, what's kind of the and/or, as well as, you know, if we do do this in-house, just whose plate is it going to fall on? Do we have this adequate staff? You know, eventually, like you say, you, you bring all this in-house eventually that you might, to your point, the analyst position. So I, again, I have no problem going through this exercise, but if we could have that information included, it'd be helpful.
Mayor Janzer, Alderman Pittner, absolutely. And, and we also owe you, along with that, you know, really, really what's the impact? So we, we always owe you that. If we're, if we're reducing expenses, if there's no impact, great. But typically, there will be, and we, we owe you what the impact is.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Finance Director.
Just a, a point of information. So I brought up the detail for the other professional services and limited it to the general fund departments, which are the bulk of what's included by property tax. A couple of outliers, and I just clicked on these really quick, police department, medical exams. Employee wellness is a big-ticket item in there. So between the two of those, that is the bulk of those expenditure items. Very similar in the fire department. Wellness and, and drug and alcohol testing, the annual physicals, mental health evaluations, and then this care resources connection in the cortical wellness app. I believe the cortical one is taken out, but the care resources, again, the mental health information. So that is the bulk of those line items in those two departments. And between the two of those, there are about 130,000 of the 170 in the general, the part, general fund. Sure.
Go ahead, Alderman Fuller.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Fuller, with what we have published on the website, you can see last year's budget compared to this year's budget. We would have to dig into the details here for this. But short, short of having access to go into the MUNIS system yourself, you wouldn't have that ability. They do make tools that allow us to have interactive budgeting like that, but there's a cost to that, so. Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, I can. To go along with that, we can, we can grant read-only access to, so you wouldn't have the ability to, to upset the apple cart too much. This is the other one, the consultants line item. I'll pick on this one. HR has some items in there for consultants and strategic support. I'm not sure what all the detail is, if some of that is included for salary surveys, workforce development, employee engagement, succession planning. And the other one is pay-for-performance, change management, and investigations if needed. This one here, the consultants for IT, is outside folks to implement upgrades. And this line item is in Lance's budget. Big ticket there is the consultants to do the CityWorks upgrade. That's our asset management software that we are at a point in time where we need to upgrade the software or we lose support. So it's, it's one of those wonderful things where every semi-years we have to get on board with the upgrade, and this is the consultant to walk through that process. So that, that is the bulk of those line items in the general fund.
Okay, so further discussion, or, and we have a motion to have staff look at this. All right, seeing none, let's vote on the motion then.
All right, further discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Blessam.
Okay, I'd like to bring a motion to remove this recycling mandate from our, I don't know if it's in ordinance or wherever, that would need to be done, and direct staff to bring us a number to offset lost revenue from customers opting out. What we expect that to look like to adjust the ongoing fee. So if I can continue, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
This is something I brought up last year. I think it's important for us to, when we're providing service to our customer who is the city, is the residents of our city who pay the bills on this, that we provide them the service that they're looking for. And I think, I think mandating this to get it off the ground, I, I certainly understand that we had to get enough of a foothold to actually make it go. But I think we're at the point now where it's shaken out, and it's, it's, it's working for what was intended. And now it's time to return the power to choose back to the people. With that in mind, it's going to have some type of cost. I've asked Jason to take a look at what those numbers will look like. You know, I, I suggested looking at anything from a 15% to a 35% opt-out, just as an idea. Might mean that fee has to go from, I think we're at 265 or something like that right now. Might have to go to 350, might have to go to $4. But the idea is that those that are choosing the recycling program and having the blue can in their driveways are the ones that are paying for it, and they're happy about that, and they're paying for a service.
Did, do we get a second on that?
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Alderman Pittner.
Go ahead, Alderman Pittner.
Just a question, Mike. In your mind, do you see, obviously you would eliminate the recycling day for individuals if they opt out, would it be replaced with a pickup, like a waste pickup?
That's a great question, and today I wouldn't expect that. I wouldn't change anything with that with this motion. Now, one thing that I will tell the council, a separate piece that I've asked Jason to take a look at, is actually revamping the overall program. I've talked before about pay-per-pickup. You know, there's a lot of different ways that we could look at this that would adjust what we're doing to better meet the needs of the public while also rightsizing our program. But this motion is focused solely on letting people opt out and everything else remaining the same.
So maybe a question.
Go ahead, Alderman Pittner.
Maybe a question for Jason. Jason, when you see, this really isn't, I guess technically, and maybe I'm not understanding it in my brain yet, this isn't necessarily a budget item, right? Because this is an enterprise fund.
Only because of the fee, we have to put the fee in the budget.
In place, okay.
Yep, that's the only reason I have it here.
Okay, and so again, this is going to be a fee-based adjustment. And then, do you have any ideas on how to supplement the program if people wanted to do this? If they didn't want the can, right? They don't want the can, because I could use extra space in my garage too. My truck might actually fit. So, but, you know, as far as like sites around the city, things like that, to supplement the program for people that didn't want to have it curbside? And where would that cost come from? Would that be a fee on only recycling users, or would that be a sanitation fee?
Mayor Janser, Alderman Pittner, you know, knowing what I know about drop-off sites, I would rather discontinue recycling altogether than get into that. Every community I've talked to, they're a management nightmare, just with contamination. We have a, you know, the people that are...the majority of the people that are recycling right now are doing a great job. Our residuals are extremely low, so we're getting a pretty good value for our recycling when we send it off. You know, probably the one thing, you know, I can take out users, probably the one thing I can't account for is, you know, as maybe the price goes up $1 or $2, and then how many people does that trigger then to back out? Because now it costs $2 more than it used to or not. So I can't get at that number, but I guess we can, you know, if this is the direction of council, we can go down that road and see where we land.
Okay. You know, it's interesting, you think about this stuff, regarding, you know, regarding other collection sites, you know, following Alderman Blessam's thought process, the people who wanted to use those then should be paying for them. And, or they should go next door to their neighbor and co-op on their container, if you take that same mental approach. Any further discussion?
A question maybe for Jason again. Jason, how do you see the, you know, this is somewhat of an all-around service, and would there be any, you can opt in one month, opt out the next? I'm just trying to get a bigger picture, and obviously we're not making necessarily a, I guess, what is the motion again? Is it to make a decision, or is this to bring back a proposal?
The motion itself is to remove the mandate. Okay, so that's the, for me, that's the key to it all. I'm sympathetic to that question exactly. I don't think you should swap in or out more than once a year. That's my thought. But again, what my thought would be is, we agree that we want the mandate to go, and we direct Jason to bring a couple of those components back. Because I think we need to know, what does that look like? What's our assumption for what we're going to lose? Because there's some revenue impact there that I think we want to offset in an enterprise fund. So I think we want to fix that right away. And if there's a couple of those parameters, I think we absolutely take care of them right then.
Go ahead.
That's my concern, is that, again, we have somebody swap in for two months, and then they swap out, and then it's a clerical nightmare, it's a tracking nightmare, to me would be an annual renewal. It's just like your Netflix subscription. If you don't opt out, you pop in for another month.
And just one question on that, because maybe this will direct us. How often can you switch sizes right now? Because the same general idea.
Right now, we allow like a size swap once a year. Anything additional, we'll charge. I don't remember what the fee is, 30 or 50 bucks for a... We have a staff that spend a lot of time doing these swaps. You know, when you have 13,000 customers, even if just a small percentage of them are doing their once a year, you know, it gets to be a lot. So my guess would be with recycling, if we open up, you know, the ability to opt out, we'll probably have an initial, you know, rush where we'll have to spend some extra time, you know, collecting cans and doing that, and then I would guess it should stabilize after that.
So a little bit of history. When we implemented this program, we commissioned a statistically valid survey, meaning that the respondents were chosen at random, and meaning there was a sufficiency in the number to provide statistical validity to how many people were going to participate. And it turned out that this, the, I believe that the number came back, that it was roughly between 6,000 and 7,000 customers. I think we had about 10,000 customers total at that time. And so that provided the basis for moving ahead with the program. And so there was some methodology to getting where we got to. And the idea also was to make it a mandatory program because the citizens in the majority who had wanted to implement a program sort of gave impetus to the idea that, you know, anybody knew, and you had the opportunity to opt out, but only once. And so that was the, you know, that was the principle that it was built on. You know, with respect to changing that now, I guess, you know, I have some misgivings about it, although I certainly can understand the point of view of, you know, we want to give the choice back, and I acknowledge that. I'm a little concerned about the methodology for making the transition, however, and I'm not sure, so we, would we increase the monthly rate to everybody at some point in, or right away in 2026? With assumptions of what's going to happen? I mean, it seems like we're kind of taking a swag at what the future holds and hoping that things turn out that way. And if they don't, if we're short money, what's the plan?
I guess I'll give you my perspective, but again, I'm open to what the council thinks, and certainly with input from Jason. My thought would be, we make the best assumptions that we can. We decide, we think that it's going to result in a 20% reduction in, you know, people opting out. And with that, we think we need to raise the rate X. And we use that as the 26 number, and we're going to learn very quickly from it. At the moment that we allow it, it's going to, we're going to get the number, it's going to shake out, it's going to be where it's at. Now, with this, you know, this is another spot where buffering in our overall dollars affords us a little bit of flexibility if we chose. We could allow opt-out without affecting the fee. If we thought that the fee was going to start a death spiral, where raising the fee adds a bunch more that want to opt out now, and it just keeps ratcheting, if we've got the funds in the enterprise fund on the sanitation side to do that without increasing it, I'm certainly open to that. My primary basis here is to get the choice back to the people. I wanted to acknowledge that there would be a dollar's impact, and that I'm ready to adjust that fee if needed. But if the council would prefer it to not do that, I'm open to that.
Further discussion? Alderman Fuller. Oh, no?
Jason, does the city currently have like a pause system for, say, the snowbirds or folks that leave for the year? Are they allowed to just put it on pause where they don't have to pay, and then come back and restart it up?
Mayor Janser, Alderman Fuller, yes. I'd probably have to talk to someone in water billing to find out exactly what we do again. Generally, a lot of people, what we require for like a lot of snowbirds, can you services and shut off your water? A lot of people don't want to shut off the water, so then they'll let their services ride. But we do offer it if we, you know, we shut off the meter and we know that they're not there using the services.
Well, and to your guys' point, one of the things I was going to say is, is if we don't offer that, which it sounds like if you don't want to shut your water off, you can't pause your garbage and trash service, or your recycle service. If we offered that as an incentive to the snowbirds and said, "Hey, you don't have to shut your water off, but we could pause your garbage and we could pause your recycling, maybe we don't lose as many customers," or something like that. I mean, just a way to maybe retain them a little longer.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just one clarification maybe for the city attorney.
So is the mandate itself in ordinance? Will we have to have a couple readings come through for that, or is that a policy? In recycling, in recycling.
I don't believe that's in the ordinance.
It's policy, okay. So this motion can be binding right now, and then we've got the follow-up items that if we need to make adjustments, but removing the mandate is on the table at this point.
I, that's what I have. So what I wrote down is that you'd like staff to come up with an adjusted rate that removes the mandatory recycling requirement, passes those costs of lunch recycling program. So as I understood it, it wasn't necessarily to do it right now as it would be right now, it was to promote.
So, and maybe, do you have something a little bit different, Michaela?
I have a drift that's a rule for a recycling mandate and direct staff to bring a number to cost of the current customer.
Correct. So the motion removes the mandate, and staff can bring proposals to adjust some of the program parameters. That's my intent.
Okay, so that would be effective as of today right now?
That's a good question. That could be a January one with the budget here, to allow us this timing? That could be.
With that information, and that's how I understood, was to remove the mandate today, after today, there is no mandate. If that's the case, and that's how I understand it, I'll probably vote no on this, but I would vote yes on a motion to bring something forward for the council to discuss with what those numbers would look like. Because we did have that discussion. I remember in the statistically valid survey, it was, there was a tipping point. I will pay for recycling at $2, $3, you have a participation level at $3.50. At $4, once it got to $4, nope, I'm not interested anymore. Whether those are statistically valid today, I think that's, but again, I think having that discussion with the information, rather than putting the mandate, because I was one of the people who voted against mandating, you know, so again, if there was an ability to remove that and give the option, I would be prepared to do that. I don't know if I have enough information to make that decision today. So I'll probably vote no on this, but if the motion gets amended to bring that to a future council item, I'd be on board.
And so just to clarify for the rest, you know, my intent here is to remove the mandate. And I do think that that's a good discussion and one for us to move forward with, and I think the adjustments can come after that. So I understand the nuance, Paul, and I'm with you on that, that I think that's perfectly fine. But I think at the end of the day, you know, we've got most of the information we need because, to be honest with you, whether we can refill the dollars or not is not really high on my agenda. I'm not as worried about that. I'm focused on making sure we're returning that power to the people to decide.
Did he want it effective, or did he not?
So as the motion reads, it's effective now, yep.
So then, just for policy standpoint, so if somebody wants to opt, is everyone still opted in, and so then they have to contact utilities to opt out, and they'll have to start tallies starting today?
That would be the motion right now, yes.
Alderman Olson.
Well, I'm very cautious in making this kind of policy change without hearing from people. I know initially when we made the, we put the mandate into place, we heard from some people who were concerned about losing a day of garbage pickup. Unless I'm misunderstanding you, Alderman Blessam, they're not getting that additional day back. Otherwise, we weren't hearing a lot of concerns, and for us to vote on this today to make a policy change, I can't go along with that because we have not heard from people.
Maybe a question. I don't know if, maybe, Jason, would it, is it really even feasible to have some people opted out? I mean, you don't, you know, when you go, right now, you go and on Monday at my house, every can up and down the street is recycling. Is it even feasible to do that route, and half of them are recycling and half of them are garbage? It doesn't seem like it would be.
Mayor Janser, no. Basically, what we do is we clean the trucks out before we go out and do recycling. So there'd have to be a hard stop between collecting garbage and then transitioning to recycling collection.
Okay, understood.
And Mr. Mayor, with that, that is not contemplated here whatsoever. So to me, we're not changing any pickup days. All it would mean is there are less blue cans out, that's all.
Okay. Okay.
And Mike, I get what your point is, but what, for them to get the lag, right? So if we say, hey, we're going to vote for this, we're going to remove the mandate, but everybody has 30 or 60 days to pull out, right? To get out of the recycle program if you want? And then that gives Jason the ability to determine how much they lost and what those fees will go up to for everybody else? Is that something that works for you?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any heartburn with that at all. That's all fine, and, but what I would say is, is that it's, keep in mind, once we remove the mandate, there's no period to opt out. You still can do it once a year whenever you choose. So we won't know what that looks like. We may have people that aren't paying attention until they're seeing less, and they talk to their neighbor and hear, "Oh, I can opt out now? Great, I'm going to call and do it." So the one thing I would say that I'm sensitive to, if we think as a council that this is the right approach, but it's better done January 1, I'm all for it. Because my point is not to make this hard. I don't want, you know, if we say yes right now, the phone starts ringing to have people that are, you know, we're on the air, right? So people could start calling the moment we have a yes vote. It's not my intent to make that hard. That's not what I'm going for here. But I think having the decision done, I think, is in our best interest. And if there's an amendment that somebody would like to see that sets it at January 1, or December 1, or whatever that is, I'm fine with that.
Now to you, Jason, then I guess what I would ask is, hearing what Mike said, if we said today, we're going to eliminate the mandate, let's say we vote for that, and we eliminate the mandate, and we say that's effective January 1, you can call between now and January 1 to tell us whether you're opting in or opting out, or just opting out, I guess. Come January 1, we'll have a pretty good idea, wouldn't we, of what we would need to up-charge to the people that are staying in?
Mayor Janser, Alderman Fuller, yeah. Although, I mean, I think that's different than Mike. Yeah.
The trouble is, we have to approve the fee structure with the budget. So I think that's the trip up to that.
I, Mr. Mayor and Alderman Blessam, I think, like you said, I don't think we have to worry too much about the funding behind it. You know, we can pass a resolution, you know, to change the recycling fee here before the end of the year for next year, and it should really get us close, I think, you know? And like you said, if we have to pull out of reserves to supplement the program, then we can readjust for 2027, we can do that as well.
Does it, Jason, if I'm a Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Paul.
Jason, or even Mike, to the intent of what you're trying to do with moving the mandate, does it make sense to do this, say, you know, you can do this once a year or twice a year? Obviously, we set the fee structurally, like, you know, but you have from... You have from, you know, the last three months of the year to pull out for the upcoming year, you know? Would there be any benefit to that? So then, again, you don't have staff time chasing the tail of, hey, we had 10 cans we got to replace today, or we have 15 cans, now we're opting back in, or the snowbird aspect of it, or maybe we do it, you know, in October to where you can opt out, your opt-out date is in October, that sets the fee for snowbirds or things like that. I don't know, I'm just trying to spitball here so that staff doesn't get another task added, which I have no problem with, but again, just getting that in line with the fee structure as well as it being efficient.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, I'm kind of playing with it in my head right now. I don't know if I'd rather have everybody call, you know, we declare like the month of July is opt-out month. the month of July is opt-out month versus just letting them occur, you know, organically throughout the year. I'm struggling which one is better, you know, I, you know, probably going out and picking up five here and six this day and, and ten the next versus, like, maybe potentially a few hundred on, on opt-out or opt-in day. I don't know if there's a, there's one that's better or not. I, maybe let me chat with my staff a little bit and we can talk to you.
Yeah, and, and again, I, I think that, I think that any of that's fine. So I, I, you know, unfortunately, we're running into a few of these where we sort of need some staff input back, because again, none of this is meant to make things harder. It's meant to provide a service back to the community and then to work it out in a way that makes sense. You know, it would seem to me that paralleling how we handle this as an ongoing thing with how we handle swaps of sizes is what makes sense. You generally get it once a year, if you're doing a sec, if you wanna opt back in for some reason, and, you know, we might charge you fifty bucks to run it out then, right? I think that general thought is what my mind goes to, and letting it happen organically. Now, this first one, there's a bunch of work. And if you would rather not do that in the snow and cold of January, and rather do it in October, then maybe we do wanna get it rolling, if, if that is the direction of the council, I don't know.
I should talk to my people before I, before I sign them up for something that they don't wanna be signed up for, so maybe, maybe just give me a.
Yep, so for, for, for the city attorney, so we've got a couple things tonight that we are asking for some input. If, if we've got some resolution from staff or some thoughts, are we able to bring those right away on Monday and do those during our miscellaneous in discussion period to try to get moving through them? Because again, what I don't wanna do is leave all this on October sixth for our finance team. So does that work fine, Monday night, if we've got answers back? Yeah. Okay. Yep, so, so Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll move to table it. Again, I, I feel strongly this is the right direction, but I do wanna get the right feedback and do this the right way. So if, so I'll, I'll move to table it.
I think your mic is off. Is your mic off?
Seeing no discussion, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to table. Okay, that motion passed. Further discussion.
I just had to ask a question on that last recycling one, just for maybe something to be clarified, too. I'll look to Mike. Mike, how do you even do that with, with a building houses? Because under builder's name, before it ever gets to the homeowner, correct, it would just be automatically opted in for, like, if you're building a new house or something?
For recycle?
Yeah.
Typically, what happens when I went through this with Tom there is, as a builder, as soon as we get, we call for that water turn on, your bill starts clicking immediately. We went to them because over a year's time, that was costing us as a builder fifteen dollars a year paying for services, we couldn't use trash receptacles during that time. So what happened? And you'll hear, your staff is, all of a sudden, that water gets turned on, a receptacle gets dropped off. The house is not, is still in stud stage. Recепacles are pulled down the road, they're lost, they're, so if the receptacle's already there, the homeowner takes possession, they call the building, put it in their name, and receptacles are, are, we only have, ask for a trash can, it's up to the new person to request a receptacle.
But they're in the program, wouldn't they be, Jason, they would be?
The, the, the new homeowner would be in the builder program because their bill started and they didn't opt out. The builder didn't necessarily opt out, correct? So that her can would just come at a later time?
Mayor Janser, Alderman Pittner, so as things, as they are today, if Mike would call and have the services turned on, we would deliver the two cans, but based on, you know, so if, if the motion is to then open up the optional recycling here in a couple weeks or at the next council meeting, then when they take possession of the house, they could tell us to come and pick up the recycling bin and we could separate those services.
Okay.
And, and just, you know, from, from my perspective, I don't have any problem with the default being on. Like, that's perfectly fine. I think as long as we're, you know, as long as people understand that they can opt out when they choose to, I think that's perfect.
Okay, we have a motion to.
No, we, we pass.
Okay. Okay, no motion, okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Okay, Alderman Blessam.
We've still got a little bit of time. I, I think it'd be a good time, because the two of you had in your letter to take a look at street maintenance, I think we could have that discussion if you guys would like. So I'll start that. I'm gonna actually bring a motion to bring us back to a ten million dollar number, that's a million more than was, was contemplated, and actually a step back from this year, not, and so I'll leave it there for the motion. Okay, and so, Mr. Mayor, if I could, so again, not that we don't wanna head towards where you've told us we need to get to Lance, because I think we're all sensitive to that. I think this year, we saw as we were really ratcheted up, it starts to get disruptive. And so what I'm wondering is, are we better off next year letting that relax just a little? Sort of give the, give the people a year off, not off, but a little reduced, and then evaluate in the following year. And so in a year where we're looking for those, those dollars, this is a place where I think it makes sense to do that. So my motion is at ten million.
Just a question for Lance. And again, I, I understand that, that, that logic, Mike, and so Lance, I wanna get your perspective. Was it the fact that we were doing more dollars in road maintenance, or was it that we had a couple polarizing projects through the main arteries of Minot? Sixteen Street's been closed for months, I wanna get your professional opinion on that.
Well, I think it's a combination of all that. We, I think we can handle this two different ways, and it really depends on where council wants to go. If, if they think the, the budget needs to be applied somewhere else because of our budget needs, I think that's a different conversation than the impact of traffic. And so this year was a really busy year for us, eleven million in, in just maintenance, and then you had sidewalk improvements, you had water main replacements that are in there that aren't with our program, they're with Jason's, but it adds to the chaos. We have a couple of, of big capital projects that are thrown in the mix, the DOT had their South Broadway box cover going, so it was a big year. Now, if, if the concern of the council is that there's too much impact on our arterial roads, then what we can do is we can shift some of our resources into localized neighborhoods and try to pick up some of that backlog versus on the arterial system. I think this year, in my opinion, it was, it was a bit of a perfect storm. This happens sometimes where, you know, the, the federal funds on certain projects will land where they land. So you seen that on Sixteen Street, you seen that on Broadway, you know, the Third Street Bridge issues were, were kind of a, a one-off deal here, and it all added to the chaos. So it really depends on, on what your needs are. If your needs are, we need funding for other important things in the budget, we get that, we understand that. If the, if the desire is to try to lessen the impact, then we can adjust our, our program to try to, to level off on, on some of those arterials. Eventually, we gotta come back to them, right? That's where most of the people driving in the cities on arterial roads, but if they need a little breather, we can, we can accomplish that as well. So you let us know and we'll adjust our program.
Mr. Mayor. Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. Lance, and just to your point, you know, you heard from people this year, right? Oh, God, it's impossible to get around town and everything. And while that's part of it, I think the reason I'm gonna vote for this is because we need to get, right now, we have between a three and a half and a five and a half million dollar number that we need to cut from this budget to be flat from last year, so there's no property tax increase. And the reason, I mean, I, I would have even suggested more than Mike, I would have gone maybe to, to two point five million off, you know, go to that one nine point five number. Again, it gives the town a little bit of a break, but in this instance where we have to start looking at priorities, right? And, and Mark, and, and when they brought the president's letter forward, said, hey, our priorities are to fund the lieutenant for the chief and, and the other stuff like that. And so this is where we have to make the hard decisions, and, and ultimately, in my mind, this is one of the areas where we can cut back a little bit now, it may cost us in the future or something, but it's, it's a decision we have to make, I think, as a council, so.
Alderman Pittner.
Mike, do you have a line item that, that you pull us from? Which one?
Yep, so it's, it's in engineering.
Okay. Okay, no, and I just didn't know if it was coming from improvement sales tax, things like that, so.
The, the funding side is a good question.
Yep.
But, but yeah, the, the, the budget side is in, it's on page forty-nine.
Thank you.
Hey, can you, can you talk about funding a little bit?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Blessam, we did touch on that just slightly on, at the last council meeting, and that eleven million is a combination of different funds, there's some sales tax dollars, some hub city funding, I believe the bulk of it is property tax. So reducing this an extra million dollars, I believe that you could take that all off of the property tax.
And, and just, just to be clear on that, what, what we're talking about right now, what we're talking about.
Talking about right now is actually, it would be two million off the city manager's budget, because in there, we were, we were moving up to twelve. This moves it back one to ten.
Okay.
So.
Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lance, I just wanna get your opinion on this, because we've talked about my time on council, the backlog, and attacking the backlog, and, and eventually we hit this point of, of we're not keeping up with the pace that they are deteriorating. Where does this put us in, in maintaining or gaining any ground on any of that? Or are we gonna be moving backwards as far as some of our, our quality of our roads?
So we, we model this every five years, right? And next year, we're up for a, call it a re-scan of our city street network, and so we're, we're working out the data points that we had in, in twenty twenty-three. And based on that model, they say we need approximately eleven million dollars a year to maintain our, our PCI number, otherwise we start losing. So because we're, we have now just gotten to that funding level over the past few years, we expect to see, when they re-scan it, our PCI number start to decrease. And like we've talked before, you know, payments are, are much like your, your house maintenance, where, you know, maybe you need a new roof, but you're trying to stretch it a few years, and eventually, you know, you might get a little water damage, and then the water damage gets a little bit more, and, and now you have a, a more expensive repair, and streets are just like that, where if we don't get to those chip seals in time, or a milling overlay, eventually it, it gets in that reconstruction. So I would anticipate that somewhere in our system, there'll be a row that maybe we could have milling overlaid, but if we have a delay because of funding, then it slips into the backlog category. So those are all just factors in the model that we have to work through. I don't think there's a, a right answer on this, we're just trying to fund it as, as much as we can. We know the numbers we need to get to, and we all knew it was gonna be hard to get to those, but I think it, what we're trying to do is, is give council a, an idea of, of what the goal is if we want streets at a certain condition. And maybe the public's okay, or the council's okay with, with something less than that number, and we can calibrate our model based on that. Right now, our target PCI is eighty, which means the majority of our system is in good or satisfactory condition, so that's what we're, we're trying to get to.
Alderman Pittner.
Real quick, Dave, what are we year-to-date on, or maybe Lance, as far as that budget of expending those dollars on road maintenance? Are we gonna be fully expended, or did we come in short, where we're trying to allocate some dollars the end of a construction season? Where are we at?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, right now, we're just starting to make final payments on some of our contracts that are over. We reallocated a hundred and sixty thousand on a street maintenance towards Third Street Bridge at the last meeting. Starting this Friday, we'll have our last project that's gonna hit, hit the street for bidding. We're trying to, we're trying to get one more in, we had some projects that came under our contingency, so we wanna try to utilize those funds. So we'll be almost right at eleven million if things come in where we think they will on our bids.
Further discussion. Alderman Samuelson.
So I'll, I'm gonna support this motion. I actually had a different number that, that I wanted to consider, but I'm comfortable with this. I do think that for somewhat, we need a little bit of a pause, but the other thing I wanted to mention, I got the opportunity a couple weeks ago to drive to Arizona, and I took two different routes going down and then a different one coming back. And I want everybody to know here that North Dakota has the nicest roads in this country, and I will put Minot in the same boat. We have the nicest roads that I've driven on, and I understand, you know, the, the keep up the maintenance and all the technology that, that we use to, to consider our maintenance and stuff, but we have some really good roads.
Further discussion. Seeing none, it's time to vote. Okay, council members, we, we had a good session, we've been at this for two hours. I don't know how long the intention is to go. We do have the option, as the city finance director put in, in the memo, of having an additional work session in short-term days coming up, so we have that as an option. I guess, I don't know if there was a particular stopping point for this afternoon, but I guess if we wanna continue for a little while, I think I would be inclined to call a five-minute recess and give everybody a chance to move about and use, use the facilities and so forth. What are your wishes? Alderman Olson.
I actually do have one question that I think is important for us to discuss, and that is what year we're using for our budget purposes, and so I think that'll cause some discussion, so I'd like to go on for a little bit longer following this.
Okay, all right, well, let's take a, let's take a seven-minute break, we'll come back at three ten, please. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, can we come back to order, please? All right, thank you, appreciate your coming back to order. So, you know, I think, you know, I think as we as we look at things, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna give the Florida Alderman Olson in just a second, but I think, I think one of the things that we need to try to come to some kind of direction on for the city finance director and the staff is what exactly, what exactly is the goal? I mean, we we have, obviously, I think some members of the council that would like to get to the dollars of the twenty-twenty-five budget, the president, the city manager's proposed budget, you know, contemplated using twenty-four as the baseline, as as is provided for in the bill that was passed by the legislature, and then the president's recommendations reduce that number, but, you know, we saw we saw the numbers that we were dealing with with respect to what those gaps are, and so I think, maybe not today, but at at some point, you know, with all of these things that we have talked about today, and that we have approved or will be approving based on getting some data back from the staff, I think we need to kind of figure out where we're at, and, you know, how close or far we are in terms of whatever that gap is. So just food for thought. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, Alderman Olson used, wanted to speak before I called the recess, so here you go, you have the mic.
Thank you. So again, I'm just to segue off of what you said, Mr. Mayor, I think we do need to determine what our end game is, but you and I spent a lot of time, along with our finance director, in developing a letter, developing a proposed budget, and in there, we did allow for our base year to be twenty-twenty-four, which is allowed in House Bill eleven-seventy-six, that our state legislator spent many months discussing, so it is allowed, and I think that their intent certainly was to, for us to keep our our property taxes at a very manageable level, but I don't think they wanted to handcuff us, so they gave us some flexibility, and in using twenty-twenty-four as our our base budget, our base year, it gives us some flexibility, not only for this year, but for the next two years, if I'm correct, yes. And so my motion is that in our our budget planning, that we are going to be actively involved in for the next couple of weeks, that we use our twenty-twenty-four as our base year.
Okay. Alderman Blessam?
Yeah, I second it, I just wanted.
You second it? Okay, thank you. Discussion.
If I could, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Alderman Blessam.
So I am, I am cautiously supportive of this, but I want to hear, Dave, what your perspective is. So my understanding of what that would mean is that we are simply saying, this is what we're using as our baseline, and if we get back to the twenty-five number, we've just banked a ton of savings that could be used in the future. That's, that's my understanding of what that is, which is a different question than, do we use all of the dollars that are available for us this year while using that baseline? Those are actually two separate things, and this just allows us the most flexibility in future years.
Mr. Mayor Alderman Blessam, I I think you're correct. There's some nuances in this calculation, because it's new, and there's not real definitive direction on how that goes. For example, if we were to adopt a budget that had the same levy as the twenty-five budget, we can carry forward that three percent, the ability to raise three percent, we can carry forward that to next year. The assumption is, then, that that three percent is cumulative, that we could carry forward the unused three percent plus three percent over what that would be. I think that's an assumption when you go into the calculation, so we have to be a little bit cautious with that. The other part of that goes with, using twenty-four as the base year, you have the three percent plus growth, which, again, was reflected in the maximum amount here. If we don't go to that amount, we can carry forward three percent, once we get past next year, we, that twenty-four is out of our base year calculation, so then we're restricted to wherever we were plus the three percent that we carried forward in unused levy. So there's a lot of scenarios that we would have to play out, and in multiple years into the future, to see how that would come to be, if if that makes sense.
I I would just, you know, I think, I think this is a a really key point, is that some of this is a little bit defined as we believe it to be now, but we're, you know, there may be some tests in the future of of what what the actual rules of the game are, and so I guess that, and and that, that's one reason why it makes sense to build some flexibility into what our position is going to be as we go forward. I I'm not so worried about FY twenty-twenty-six, to be honest with you, I'm more worried about FY twenty-seven and twenty-eight, because if we, if we have ourselves too locked down, under, under the new rules, as we transition to these caps, we could find ourselves in a bind. Witness some of our friends across town in the courthouse, or in the county courthouse, where that's exactly the situation that they're in, they don't have reserves, they don't have the flexibility that they'd like to have to to operate the the county budget. So, so anyway, that's just, you know, Alderman Pittner.
Just so that I understand this, Dave, in my mind, I'm gonna go, I'm a visual guy, so the only years when we talk about baseline, we're only worried about twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, all of these other ones are irrelevant, after we approve this budget, twenty-twenty-three falls off as a baseline, correct, and the only one, twenty-twenty-four, after next year's budget, that one falls off of us being able to 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 move back and use that as a baseline, correct?
Mr. Mayor Alderman Pittner, that's the way it is in today's world. So, yeah, under the law as it is today, we can go back and use three years in the baseline calculation, and after next year, the way it currently is, that falls off. So for this year, we're looking back at twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four for the baseline calculation, and then we go through this math to come up with what the maximum amount can be, and what the carryover is. So you're correct, and I'm not saying that we have to go to the maximum allowed at all, that's, that's just a calculation, that's the max, we can't go anything beyond that, we have what we were in twenty-twenty-five's budget, somewhere in between, it would be very helpful for us if we had a target, and that's kind of my thing that I would, it would make it a lot easier for us, if we knew we had a target, that this is where we wanted to land at the end of the day, then we can go back, and we can implement all of the things we've discussed today, if we got some guidance on the suggestions from the president's message, what's in, what's out, what we don't want to consider, we can do the math, we can come up with a total of where we're at, where the the target is, and then we know a number that we have to go back and and come up with other ways to cut or modify the budget.
Maybe this is just over my head, is it irrelevant whether or not we declared this year as the baseline year, because we could declare last year's budget as the baseline year next year as well, correct?
Mr. Mayor Alderman Pittner, yeah, I don't know, I mean, it just depends on where we're trying to go with that, if we want to use that as the calculation, again, that's what the use, or how we came up with at a maximum amount. The the big thing is, is after next year, unless the law changes, which is completely possible, that base year drops off, and we potentially lose the ability to levy those dollars without a vote.
Okay, so so Dave, just to, just to start thinking about this in terms of real dollars for a moment, so let's say that we make the decision, and I assume there's some form we turn in somewhere that says what our baseline is, or it's publicly published or something, right? So we say twenty-four is our baseline, which sets what our max would be, which is the twenty-nine point five, so that's, that's the first thought. Then, we, let's just for sake of argument, we come back in and we match exactly to the twenty-five number. So theoretically, there's four and a half million dollars that we've decided to forego, that we could have levied. We are then able to take a portion of that and carry it forward, and that's the steady-state way of looking at it. Every year, we could do that. If we come in underneath what our baseline is, we can carry that forward. So in the scenario I just gave, where we use twenty-four as a baseline, and we spend the twenty-five number, which is just over twenty-four million dollars, what do we bank for future use? Is there an easy way to think about it?
Mr. Mayor Alderman Blessam, and that's where we get into a little bit of dicey territory, because the way the calculation is done, is it tells us we can carry forward our three percent increase.
Not dollars.
Not dollars, the three percent increase. So that's what I'm saying is, is, I agree with you a hundred percent, the math says that we had five million dollars that we should be able to bank going forward, the way this calculation is written out, it says we have three percent increase that we can carry forward. So once we get past that, the ability to claw back that increase, we're going to be limited to three percent plus whatever of the percentage increase we have carried forward. So we could find ourselves in a position where we couldn't get back to par with where we were in the twenty-four budget. So that's part of the risk, and also part of the unknown, and I think that's one of the reasons why they have the baseline calculation in there for cities that are in a position like us, that decided to use reserves, or reduce the levy, or had some other funding source or anomaly that reduced the budget that one year, that they weren't locked into a a number that was unsustainable going forward. So I think that's part of the rationale behind that, but there's still some unknowns and some assumptions that we have to build in on how that math works going forward, and that's a little bit of a concern.
So if I can continue, Mr. Mayor, so just, the the thought then is, if we use that baseline, we bank the full three percent, just don't even think of it as dollars now, it's a percent, because that's the way it's written. So next year, when we're sitting in this spot, and we're, and we're doing our budget, and we're contemplating a three percent increase over whatever we did this year, or whatever baseline we've set again, we would then have that extra three percent that we also could work with as a buffer, if 3% that we also could work with as a buffer, if required, okay? And so, yeah, so I, you're, you're not, Dave. So I think, I think we're generally on the same page. We got to see how it plays out. But for my council colleagues, these are two separate questions in my mind. A question right now that's on the table is, do we have some protections we can put in place for the rainy day that could come, right? And I understand that. Like, I, that's why I seconded the motion, and I'm, I'm generally supportive of that. But I think you all know where I'm at on all of this, which is, I want it as flat as we can make it at all times. So banking what we can is a different question than padding our spending and our actual levy to try to actually drive our trajectory, because that's a whole different question. And I will not support that. So this concept, I think, works in my mind, with the idea that it's a rainy day fund, is all it is. And the hope will be, we still do our hard work around this table to get to the right numbers for the people.
I, I think that's well said, Alderman, bless him. I, I think the, the concern that I have, as I stated, is not so much next year, because we kind of can see what that looks like. But 27 and 28 may put us in different circumstances. And so to me, flexibility is paramount, especially as we're going into this future of these caps. And, you know, legislature's not going to be back next year. They're gonna, it's gonna be 27 before they're back, and we don't know what they're gonna do that spring. So I think, I think maintaining this flexibility, and therefore I'm in support of Alderman Samuelson's motion. Alderman Pittner?
Yeah, no, and I, and I, I agree. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when we talk about some of the cuts we've made, which we can be supportive and, and, and say, you know, we need a break on road maintenance, but we need to take out road maintenance, or consulting, or the VERF. With some of the constraints we have, those are never a possibility in the future. If we, if we hamstring ourselves, I mean, we can never recapture those types of projects or level of services for citizens, which some can say they've asked for through citizen satisfaction surveys, or, or whatnot. Or we've had, like you say, been perfect storm with some of these road projects, and then the wettest July on record to slow some of them up, you know, to, 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 to highlight, uh, be highlighted by the start of school starting. So again, I agree. I, I just don't want us to get into the position, I've said it before, I don't want us to lie to ourselves about what it costs to provide the level of services in mine. And are there efficiencies? Absolutely. Like, to, to Alderman Blessing's point, this is what we're here to do. We're here to sharpen our pencils, and, and as department heads, you guys are here to sharpen your pencils. But again, I just don't want us to back ourselves into a corner so that all of a sudden, hey, we can never get to $11 million. And now we're, now we're perpetually moving backwards on road maintenance, or we're perpetually moving back on services. And then you have public safety that we are gonna have to factor some of these budgets, you know? What if you do have a good hiring year? Now you can't hire, you're, you're, you're faced with dipping into reserves, and, and I get the point of maintaining high level of reserves. And if we want to spend those down to put it to work for the citizens, I'm on board with that as well, so that we, they don't see those hikes in, in, in property tax levies. But again, I think we need to be honest with ourselves about what it costs to run the city, and, and, and making sure we maintain that flexibility. Because if we don't do it this year, next year's our, our last chance, last chance to capture that level of, 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 of investment into the city, so.
Additional discussion. Alderman, bless him.
So it, just, one of the things I want to make sure everybody's clear about with that, that recapture concept. So let's say that we just, rough numbers, we grab onto this 6%. That's a possibility. In order to actually capture it, we have to go levy it. So we have to be clear about that. This is not just, oh, theoretically, we kind of got this bubble forever. No, it would have to be levied. And so that day of reckoning in terms of actually charging the public for it would have to actually come. And they would also, you know, we would also, in my opinion, have to be in a position where we're going, ugh, you guys, we, we just dropped 6 million in, in sales tax revenue. It's not going to support the, the organization, right? I think, in my mind, that's the level of calamity we'd be at, and I'm willing to make sure that we avoid that. But in three, four, five years, if this stays more or less as is, this all becomes moot because we're on a regular cycling of, of what the growth curve looks like. So I understand it's a one-time thing, but it would mean a big day of reckoning and a property tax increase to get there.
Yeah, that, that, that's certainly true. And, and by no means does, does approving this motion mean that we, we don't drive to make every dollar count and squeeze everything as best we can, so. Alderman Samuelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave, just the 3% carryover. Does that, would that be 3% every year? Or is it, you know, if there's a savings of the 3%, you can carry over, would that keep adding up over years?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Samuelson, that is the million-dollar question here, because the way they have the mechanism laid out right now, it calculates the carryover to next year, and we still have that base year calculation in this worksheet. But we don't have, is how we would contemplate carrying that 3% forward to a future year. So is it continued to be cumulative, or do you have the opportunity to use that 3% next year, and then it's gone? And once we get through the base year calculation here, it's, it's essentially year to year. So that's where it's unclear. So I don't know that I have that answer, and that's part of the, you know, the new territory that we find ourselves in, that we're going to have to navigate through this. And again, there wasn't clear direction on, on how that's going to play out moving forward. So that, that's something that we'll have to work through.
Further discussion. Alderman Pittner.
Question for Lance. Lance, ballpark cost of, you know, square yard of asphalt, when we talk about road maintenance, or chip seal, or percentage increase over the last two, three, four years. Have you seen an increase in price?
Generally, in the last several years, yes. This year compared to last year, we actually seen prices drop a little bit. A lot of that was due to our competitors, if you will, in the industry. So DOT had a down year on pavement maintenance, because they put most of their money into bridge maintenance. So in our region, we're really comparing against Ward County Highway and what they're doing. Now, if, next year, if, if the DOT has a lot of maintenance projects coming up, then, you know, those prices may elevate a little bit. Where some of the oil comes from can determine prices. So it varies a little bit. But generally speaking, you're gonna have construction labor costs that go up. Material prices generally go up over time. And so at some point, there'll be a, a place where we're gonna have to increase a little bit to keep up with inflation, even to keep par with the 10 million that is gonna be allocated.
To that point, Mr. Mayor, that, that's, that's, I want to drag, and that, that, again, we can, we can maintain a flat level and try to maintain as flat as possible, but just the cost of asphalt, the cost of concrete, the cost of, you know, bridge materials is only going to increase over time. I, I, very rarely do we see it go down, you know, from where we were, like you say, six, seven years ago. We're much higher than we were. So, so again, just things for us to be cognizant of, when we try to capture those costs, or capture that, that, that flexibility, something that we, that we want this body to be aware of.
Alderman, bless him.
And I think that's a really good point, Paul. And one of the things that we want to, we want to think about is, as a long-term method of doing business, what we have to figure out is, how do we balance all of the factors that are driving all of this, right? So that's a big growth thing, right? Development, new property coming online, all of the pieces that are used to keep things as close to a very small increasing curve at all times. I think that's really what we're looking for. And, and I think, you know, I think maybe some of us that are really pushing hard right now is we're trying to, to bring a step change that brings us back and starts that up again in that slow growth. Because then maybe the growth in the community can keep us close, the growth in sales tax can keep us close, and those increases don't have to come. I think that's, that's, I think, what we're, what we're looking for here, and the hope that we can bring to a budget. Now, the legislature and the governor said, hey, that number's 3%. Don't go above it. And I, I guess I would say statewide, that's probably a pretty big step back. That's why there's a lot of people that are having a hard time right now, because it's been more than that. You know, I think that's part of the issue that we've had. But keep in mind also, they're watching this very closely, you know? And, you know, I had a conversation with Senator Hoag on this, when he, when he saw the President's letter, and, and just kind of where we're sitting, and, you know, the fact that we're using the other baseline. I don't know for all the legislators that it was perfectly clear what the options were gonna be available. But I think what it's telling us is, what I tried to explain to the legislature was, the starting point for everybody's gonna be, what's the maximum I can do, because I can't afford to break my curve, right? And that's what we're seeing play out across this entire state. And we're seeing that as well. We are fortunate to be in the, in the place, I believe, where we can actually set our budget to be lower than that, use the, the bank savings as our buffer rather than the actual dollars. That's a good thing.
So, Mr. Mayor.
City Finance Director.
So again, very good discussion. Again, at the end of the day today, a target, and maybe it's a range, that gives us some latitude yet to work in, so we can work all aspects of that range, so that we don't get to October 6th at the 11th hour, and we're trying to scramble just to make a number. If we have a target, and we have some directive on what was included in the President's message, whether we're going to go along with that, that gets us to a point where we have a number, and then we can, at our next meeting, we can kind of use that as a jumping off point, if that makes sense. Because some of these things will have a, a significant impact on this year's budget, but not sustainable into the future. And the example that I'll use is the VERF. We can cut it, we can get by without replacing any vehicles and equipment for a year, but eventually, we need to have some new equipment and vehicles back into budget. So that is something that, over time, we have to be able to account for. So again, if we get a target or a range, we can, Tom and I can work with the departments and figure out, get a list of items that council can look at and say, yep, that makes sense, we're gonna get rid of that. No, we want to keep this in the budget, and we can whittle it down that way.
Alderman Pittner.
To that point, Noel, look to Brian. When, when we had the, the general fund VERF allocation, do you, do you anticipate that being the starting point for what the, what they ask would be for, for capital replacement of, of equipment?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, I, I think I understand the question, so forgive me if I, I'm misstating this. The VERF allocation itself, the 2.2, 2.1. Just general fund, the 1, 1.8?
1.18.
Okay. Again, I want to make sure I understand this. So the 1.8 million dollars, with the availability of those funds, with any funds for that matter, yeah, would be kind of the start of the fleet management, I guess, process and plan that we're trying to achieve. It would get after some of those early vehicles. Again, it's kind of a moving dial. If we are given more funds, then we can get after more vehicles. If we're given less funds, because funds are not available, again, we would be able to still get after some vehicles, it would just kind of shift that back a little bit.
I just want to make sure I understand. So the vote to remove the VERF removed any general fund dollars allocated to equipment replacement, correct?
Yeah, remove the full 2.3. It's all done.
So, yeah.
Enterprise funds.
Enterprise funds as well. So right now, in our, in our, in our budget, there's, there's...
Proposals back for what needs to be purchased in '26.
So I get, yes, yep, yep. So, and again, that's your starting point, right? I mean, that's, that's, this is what we, what we want, but we're gonna...
So Alderman Pittner, I kind of get after your point, which I think we're, we're leading to. The fleet management plan process itself, with the fleet management working group, essentially was going to do exactly that. Our intent was to identify the funds that are gonna be available for 2026. With that conducted inventory, ensuring which vehicles, within certain performance metrics, are meeting the criteria for replacement. And then from there, we would go ahead and identify a list by department of which vehicles needed to be replaced under those, right now, we're, we're 12 to 13 criteria that we have to actually follow within our system limitations. That again, will help us determine, based off of those criteria developed by the fleet management working group, which vehicles were gonna be brought to the attention of council and recommended for replacement in that following year.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Alderman Blessing.
So, so Dave, to, to start maybe chiseling into, well, actually, Mr. Mayor, we've got a, we've got a motion on the floor.
We do.
So maybe I'll, I'll call the question on that, and then we can, we can do some additions to this.
All right. I, I guess my thought on this is, I have no problem using 24 as our baseline year, because obviously, to hedge our bets, right? It was our highest levied year we've ever had in the city of mine, and so we're gonna hedge our bets off of that. But to Mike's point, I want to see us fund to a, to a lower level, right? I, I, I want to see us fund to the 25 level as far as mills and everything. And right now, if, if I'm not mistaken, Dave, like 29 and a half million is what we're estimating to levy in property tax, and 25 was 25 and a half million, is that correct? About a $4 million difference. So as I see it right now, we've only cut about 3.3 out of the budget, and we're gonna add back vehicles and things that we need to pay for in those things. So we have to identify some more cuts, guys, and priorities, that, you know, we're, this is becoming about priorities at this point. Even if we use that higher level, we're not gonna fund past 2025 as far as property tax goes, because constituents don't want a property tax raise, guys. We've heard that from everybody. Every single person that's ever said anything, don't raise our property taxes. So, I mean, that's ultimately where we're going here, I, I believe.
Mr. Mayor.
Finance Director.
And that's why I was kind of getting to this, if we're implementing what's in the President's message, if we use that as the starting point, that was about 27.2 million in property tax level. If you take the roughly $2 million in cuts that we talked about today, now we're down to about 25 million, just rough math. So we're getting in the ballpark, we're somewhere between where we were in 20, for the 2025 levy, plus the 20, if we took that amount, plus the 3% in growth. So that's the ballpark that we were in as it sits, if we implement the President's message with what we discussed today. So that's what I'm getting at. If we get a target or a range, so now we know what the delta is between where we're at, or what's been proposed, and the work that we have left to come up with.
So, Mr. Mayor, I want to talk more about exactly what Dave's, oh, yeah, exactly. I want to get the vote on this.
Yeah, you called the question.
Yep.
So let's go ahead and vote on the motion on the floor, which is?
Creating 2024 as the base year for 2026.
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could, and so what I'll do to, to get directly at what Dave's talking about is, I'll, I'll bring a motion that we provide staff direction to return us to the 2025 budget flat for the levy. Okay? So that's saying 20, just over 24 million dollars. That's the motion, and then we can talk. So, Mr. Mayor, if I can continue.
Go ahead.
So a, a couple of things that I, that I want to understand a little bit, Dave, before we really get down to voting on this question. Number one, in, with where we're sitting, it gets a little complicated, because right now, we have an approved preliminary budget. So if we didn't, if we didn't pass one motion again, and came on October 6th, and, and rubber stamped that, it's done. That is the budget, as it sits. Now, we've made changes today that are substantive changes to that. So as an example, the reason I, I bring that up is, is that, you know, Mark and Lisa have a set of items in their, in their letter that we have not yet addressed. So right now, an assistant position in the city manager's office, a couple positions in the police department, those are removed because they were removed in the preliminary budget. And that's where we sit today if we take no action on those. Do I have that right?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Blessing, so the preliminary budget is the starting point. The first reading of the budget will actually be on Monday.
Okay.
And right now, the default is exactly like you said, it's, it's the preliminary budget. But we can make changes to that, you know, and we can also make changes to that preliminary budget between first and second reading. So that was my thought process. If we had clear direction, and I've already entered into the system, that changes proposed in the President's message, so it's easy for us to use that as a jumping off point. I can easily add the changes that were voted on tonight. So we could bring that forward as the first reading on Monday, and use that as the starting off point instead of the preliminary budget.
Okay.
So we're, we're still wide open at this point, and there can be changes made up till October 6th.
Okay. So if I can continue then, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So then, with, with all that in mind, I, I, I'm a, I'm a little perplexed, and this kind of gives us some thought long-term, Tom, on, on, on where we look at that and how we work with staff. how we work with staff. Because, to be honest, what you're saying, Dave, is what I thought maybe we ought to have done today, as the very first thing, rather than starting off with a great big sledgehammer, where council members are deciding what is in and what's out, my thought was, we maybe should have gone to staff and said, "This is our number. Tell us where you guys want to do it." Because we've just taken a great big sledgehammer to what you guys all worked on. Now, what I'll say with that, though, to me, that's predicated on the idea that we started with a number that was at 29 and a half million. So, yeah, I got to go find some big numbers, right? You know, I don't know exactly what led us to that point. I think, you know, again, I, I feel like I put a lot of time and effort into this. I don't know that I always have every concept, but I feel like there are some pieces that I don't understand fully, and what we would do to actually get to the number. And so, just to cut to the chase, I brought the motion. I'd really like to see us back where we were last year. I fully expect that to require reserves, because remember, in last year's budget, when we went through this process, I pointed out the $7.2 million that in my book, we owe the people from 2023. We gave them back about 3.4 of that. In the plan that I laid out, there was another $2 million in this year's budget. So, we could use that too, to take the President's number from 27.2 down to 25.2 right now, and then our changes get us even maybe below the 24. So, I think directing staff to go back and tell us, how do we finalize these last few pieces, I think is appropriate, and it probably should have been the only way we do it. And next year, I kind of hope we do. Because the, you know, again, we can do this, but I can't be in every last meeting. I can't be that deep, you guys. I can't. I want, I want to be a, a big partner to our staff to get to the right number. Right now, we're breaking everything you guys put a lot of hard work into. I don't, I don't like that personally. So, again, I, I think this is the right direction, and what I, I think what you said, David, that I, that I really like is, in my mind, there'll be a continuum of options, and we may grab some of them, different ways to get to the number, that the priorities of the council will sort of come through, and we'll use those to get to where we collectively are comfortable. And I think that's the appropriate way to go. We did a really good round of that before the preliminary budget, and I felt like everything looks really good, like I said at the beginning. You know, salaries down. In fact, the work that we did today, using the concept that I brought, where we're going to use a vacancy factor, might actually put us below on salaries and benefits. Depends on what the vacancy factor looks like. That's unbelievable work, you guys. That, I, like, I don't, can you think of a government that has actually shrunk its salary and benefit costs? I, I don't know of one. That's crazy. And so, we've got a lot of really, really good things going on, but right now, we sit here with our great big sledgehammer, trying to fix some big number that is still permeating our budget, and I don't know how to get at it. And I think we have to ask you guys to do it as a staff. That's my thought.
Mr. Mayor, one.
Finance Director.
So, again, pushing for the target, it gives, it gives us clear guidance of what we need to strive for. One thing I want to point out is in the President's message, there are some changes that impact revenues in there, and that is primarily the reallocation of some of the economic development sales tax. So, that's where getting some direction on the President's message is important, because if we're not going to go down that path, that's about a million dollars that changes the, the calculus here. So, and, and part of that is because we're using economic development dollars to fund flood control maintenance, which is currently allowed under the ordinance. And then the other part was a change that would take some of that economic development, sales tax dollars, and use it for direct property tax relief. So, the combination of those two items, I think, was just under a million dollars. So, if that's something that we're not going to entertain, that's another million dollars that we have to find in cuts, to make this a reality, to get to that level. That's why having some direction on, on the President's message and some of those things is important, or at least that component of it, is important to us, because otherwise, to get to that number, we just need to dig a little harder.
Okay, we're still on the, I believe we're still on the 2024 baseline. No?
No, we moved on, right?
Oh, yeah.
Provides direction to refer the city council budget unless the last funding amount matches 2025.
Oh, yeah, okay. Pardon me. I, I think in addition to what City Finance Director noted, I think we, I think that the labor costs piece is flatter in '26 as it's proposed than it normally would be, because of the potential transition to some kind of merit-based plan or some, some other thing like that. You know, so, I just, I think it's important for the councils to realize that, that, that virtually flat, or if it turns out that it's a decrease for '26, is not necessarily likely to hold or be the same circumstance in '27 and going forward. So, we have to think about that as well. Further discussion, Alderman Pittner.
No, again, I think my reservation with, with having the target of being the, the 2025 number is that I don't see us getting there without reserves. And it's, it's a practice that, that, again, I don't think is sustainable. Mike, you identified that $7 million. We spent, gave half of it back last year to the people to subsidize the budget. We do that again, what happens after two years, when those reserve levels are down, and, and, and we've, we've, we've maxed out that piggy bank, if you will? Again, I just, I don't like the idea of lying to ourselves about what it costs to run the city and, and maintaining that. And, and former city manager Stuart mentioned it, just the cost of maintaining is an increase. And, and so, again, I can't support the motion to use that as the baseline or the target number, because I don't see it as sustainable long-term.
Further discussion. Alderman Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the only thing I would have to say, Dave, when you were talking about, you know, the million dollars in the President's letter and everything like that, I, you know, separate from Mike's question that he's asked or, or brought a motion on, shouldn't we wait to see what the public brings us on Monday night at the meeting, when we're having a, a public hearing about what they want to see and what they'd prefer? I mean, if we get direction in there that says, hey, we don't want to do that, or we want to do this, or whatever, any decision we make today is probably going to be undone anyway. So, is that something we can answer, maybe next week after Monday's meeting? Not the, not the 2025 level, to Mike's question, but whether we're going to follow the President's budget, or whether we're going to look at some of the other things, or, I don't know. Does that make sense?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Fuller, we, we can certainly wait. I think the expectation, and some of the conversations is, we're probably going to have to have at least one more meeting like this to work through this, so we can certainly do that. It's, it's just part of the math, because that revenue component was in the President's message, that if we're not going to go down that path, and we're going to go to the 2025 level, it's just another million dollars of cuts that we need to come up with. So, we can get there after the public hearing, or at some point in the future. I'd rather not wait till October 6th, but we still have time. It just, it kind of sets the goal, and it, it just, it makes it nice for us if we have a clear goal, and we're, we don't move the goalposts a bunch of times in between.
Further discussion. Alderman Samuelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess I, I think all the information we can get from citizens and from staff is, is helpful. I, I'm going to support this motion, and partly beans is because I, I think our citizens deserve this, and staff has done a wonderful job on this budget, and we're close. But I'll, I'll be straightforward and say that I will not support a budget that has a property tax increase. I just will not. Our citizens deserve this. They've been, they've been waiting a long time, and we need to be good stewards with their money.
Further discussion. Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A, a, again, we, we saw what the, the fallout is of, of lying to yourselves about what it costs to run government. We saw in 2017 to 2018 to 2019, a couple of large increases. Then we actually saw a couple decreases, and managing the budget, and, and, and good work of staff, and the good work of, 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 of the council at the time, coming out of COVID, increases in budgets, increasing construction costs, and then the heavily subsidized budget in 2025. Again, I just don't want to take, if we're going to step backwards from, from, from 2024, you know, even in the red book, at the state level, we are not the highest, not top two, we're not top three in the state as far as property tax levies, in property tax. So, again, I just, I want to make sure that we're clear. We, we have seen decreases, we have seen flat budgets in the past, over the last handful of years. So, again, I just don't want to take too far a step backwards, especially with the constraints that we have on us from the state, because we will never recapture those levels of investment, those levels of services, those levels of maintenance into our, into our infrastructure and into our facilities. We just, we just won't, we can't.
Mr. Mayor. Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. Just, I guess, a little comment on, on what Alderman Pittner was just saying. Right, you can see there where, what it's costing to run the city, but here's the thing, we don't have a revenue problem. We have said that over and over and over. What you're seeing there is elevated spending, year after year after year after year, and nobody ever saying no. This is where we're going to get to the point where we're like, okay, you know what? We can't continue to do that. It is not sustainable, because the people in this community that we're putting that burden on have said, "It's not sustainable. We can't keep taking these tax increases," so.
Further discussion. Can we get a clarification on the motion, or can you give us the motion, City Clerk? Okay, so that doesn't, that doesn't dictate where the cuts...
It's a target.
It's a target, so it's, I think, you, it, you know, there's all kinds of things that were mentioned as potentialities for that, whether it be reserves or, or what have you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, let's vote. Okay, so...
Mr. Mayor, I, if I could, I have...
Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. I just have two quick questions, and Lance, I don't know if Stefan is here or not. In our budget line items, we have line item 46120, that's signals and lighting, and then we have 44505, which is signals and lighting. What's the difference between those two, if I can ask?
Well, those is internal maintenance that are performed by our traffic staff, and the other is external, where if, say, a signal cabinet goes out or something, we have to...
Okay. And, and are we anticipating going into next year some significant increases? Because we got about a 415 to $420,000 increase between those two categories. Are we buying a new light or two? Is that what we're seeing there? Or is it something else?
LED conversions is a big chunk of it.
Mr. Mayor.
Lance, did you have something further?
Yeah, we, we actually went through our, our signal maintenance and our traffic sign maintenance, and made reductions to those. We did have some of those projects, like the LED maintenance, that went into that, those categories as well. What makes these a little complicated is, these used to be one fund a few years ago, and then they got split. And so, for the last several years, because some of those costs have been mixed together, we've been trying to right-size those budgets. So, Stefan has done a good job at, at trying to separate as much as he can and, and do reductions. And some of these reductions have been because we've been able to update our system, so it requires less maintenance. So, over time, we've been trying to ratchet that down as our risk level goes down.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman, bless him.
Okay, so I, you know, I wasn't sure how far we were going to get today, so I'll bring this, David's talked about a little bit. From your letter, I'm actually going to make an adjustment, though, to sales tax penny allocations that you suggested. My motion is to change the first sales tax penny allocation from the current layout to change the second half to 25% improvements and 25% property tax relief. So, a little bit different motion than was considered weeks ago. In addition to that, directly right now, I would also add the $665,900 to the city council budget alongside our other community contributions to fund MACEDC at the level requested. So, this directly funds MACEDC out of the general fund, right alongside our other community contributions, but it changes the first sales tax penny to 50 flood, 25 improvement, 25 property tax relief. So, Mr. Mayor, if I could...
Yeah, can you, okay, can you go through that step at a time, please?
Yep, you bet. So, let's start with the sales tax penny allocation. So, today, we are 50% flood, we are 25% improvements, we are 15% economic development, and 10% property tax relief. This motion changes it to 50 flood, so no change to flood. It keeps improvements at 25%, because we had some, some back, pushback on that a little bit. It preserves that funding, but it combines the 10% for property tax relief and economic development into one bucket for property tax relief. Doesn't have to be allocated to public safety, it simply goes to the general fund to offset property tax. In addition, it moves $665,900 from direct funding from the first penny for MACEDC into our city council budget alongside our other contribution buckets, and funds them directly out of the general fund by the city council's mandate each year.
Alderman Olson.
Well, thank you. And I, I said this before, and I'm, and I'll say it again, I need to honor what the people voted in. And it, it may have been a number of years ago, but it has not been brought up to a vote, and the, the intent has changed for that. And, and I know we have the authority to be able to change things, but just because we can doesn't mean that we should. And the people have spoken, and they've spoken twice, and they have intended to have a percentage of that penny go to sales tax, and I, I need to leave it there for them.
Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just real quick on that.
Alderman, bless him.
So, just to reiterate the, the timeline on that, first vote, 1993, so 32 years ago. Second vote, if I remember right, 2003. And then, actually, council has taken some actions since then to make additional adjustments after that point. So, I think, as, as Alderman Olson rightly said, it, it certainly is within our purview to do so, and I would, I would suggest that it is our duty to do so if we believe it's the right thing. That doesn't mean you need to vote yes, but it does, to be, it, it's absolutely our duty to allocate these sales tax pennies to provide the value to the, to the residents that we should be.
Alderman Olson.
Thank you. And, and just based on the, the last two meetings that we've had, and there's been a lot of discussion, I've had a number of people come up to me and say they want to be able to talk to us about this. And so, it is not the correct time tonight to make this decision, because we need to wait until the 15th to hear from them. I think there will be a number of people here who indicate that they want to keep that percentage of the penny for economic development, and we need to give them that opportunity to talk.
Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, again, I'm not going to support this. I, I believe it's important to leave that. We see where the council is split. We have seven members now, so maybe we'll have some direction on this. But we, we did go through an economic development committee review at the direction of, of Alderman Blessam. We did say that we would give them an opportunity, those, those members an opportunity... committee review at the direction of Alderman Blessam. We did say that we would give them an opportunity, those members, an opportunity to speak to council. We did not reach out to them when we had it on our council agenda. We did say we would give them an opportunity in the future to have that hearing to do that. We have a budget process. We've had a lot of discussion on the, on the sales tax dollars. And again, I'll go back to David, the finance director's slides. Again, we see what happens when we rely heavily on, 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 on sales tax for property tax relief. And we subsidize our budget with that, a variable revenue source. It's not good business practice. It is not a best practice. And we are, we are setting up future councils, I believe, for failure when we do that. Because there will be tough decisions in the future. If sales tax revenues become a shortfall, again, it's not, it's not a good idea. It's not a best practice.
There's another piece of this history, which, which is that one of the reasons that this economic development was funded out of sales tax originally is because it's always been viewed as a regional activity. What's good for Burlington is good for Minot. What's good for Mohawal is good for Minot. And so because, because the sales tax dollars are partially paid for by people who come from those areas and do their business, we've also had the use of the economic development dollars for businesses that are in some of those surrounding communities. So I think it's important to remember that as we, as we think about this. And I would agree, I think, I think this is one where it's important that we hear from folks at the public hearing as we contemplate a change to a long-term approach to how we program this. Alderman Blessam?
So just, I guess, a little explanation for why I brought it. It wasn't actually my intent to do this today. I think it's an important discussion and one that we need to have, but two things kind of caused me to get to this point where it was time to at least bring the discussion up. Number one, it is in your letter. So whether we want to hear from the public or we don't, there's a proposal from the two of you that says we should at least adjust it. It's at least acknowledging that, hey, maybe, maybe this is the right approach, and we need to pull back a little bit here. So for me, this is absolutely on the table, you know, off the table, I guess, in the right context here for our discussions before we get to the end of the budget. The second part is, we've got the finance director asking us directly on this question if we can give them direction. And so that's the second reason that, again, I had, I had two pieces of this on my, on my list of things that I would get to at some point during this process. And that's why I, that's why I asked for it. Now, one other thing that I'll note is that had we decided to move forward with a public hearing directly on this question, we'd already have the feedback. Instead, we're waiting for Monday now, and that's fine. We're going to hear it from them then. So, you know, again, I'm, I'm okay with tabling this discussion, you know, and deciding whether this is the right approach after hearing from more folks on Monday night, if that's the right way to go. But I'm not sure, I guess, you know, there aren't many things that change the way that I look at things because I hear from more people. Okay, there are, I tend to use what my gut and what I believe is the right path forward for us in most of what I do. That doesn't mean that I don't listen or that I don't hear from people. But my approach to it is usually to say, what do I believe is best? And when I come up for election again, the people will decide if that was the right approach. That's what representative government is. It's not a democracy. We don't have buttons on the wall to vote yes or no for public things that come up. That's not how this works. We elect people to represent us and to make the decisions. And so I'm, I'm always happy to do that because I feel it's a part of the duty, and I do want to hear from people, but at the same time, we've got a council, or a council president's letter saying that this isn't a priority. We've got the finance director asking us for the input back. You know, I'm ready to vote if everybody else is. If we table it, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor?
Finance Director?
So just a point of clarification. I think the intent or the rationale, and I certainly don't want to speak for Mayor Janser, Alderman Olson, but I think that the concept there was it would be, an allocation would be decided every year at budget time. So the modification to the ordinance would be that property tax relief would be an allowable use under that allocation of the sales tax. So every year during budget time, it was meant to be flexible. It wasn't a permanent reallocation away from economic development. So that's, I think, one nuance between what was proposed in the president's message and how I'm understanding this change unless I'm misunderstanding this. So but I think it's an important nuance with that, too, that we should make sure that we're clear in that directive going forward.
Alderman Samuelson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to address a little bit about the votes that were done for this. I voted for both of those. Both times on that. Economic development and what we do with that money has completely changed since, I believe, the first one was 1991. It's completely changed. We have $10 million approximately sitting in the magic fund that just keeps building that we're not using. We could still be using that for economic development if this passes. The other thing I want to state, too, is the city council has changed our sales tax allocations a few times over time. This is not unusual to do it this way. I've heard from a lot of people on this issue, and I'm glad Mike brought it up, too. We could have, we could have had a public hearing on this, but it wasn't wanted for input. I'll support this motion. I think when it comes to the economic development portion of it, it does not mean that it can't be done. As the city council is going to have to vote for it, and they're going to have to fight for it. It's the only difference.
Alderman Pittner?
To that point, Scott, we have to fight for it, if you want to put it that way, every year, because it's voted on every year and every budget to begin with. And I shared those same frustrations when I first got on council. That's why I made the ordinance, the recommendation for the ordinance change, because the magic fund wasn't doing anything. The magic, in my opinion, right? The magic fund was there. It was accumulating dollars, or we were directing portions of it to flood control. And it wasn't working for the citizens. It wasn't going to work for the citizens. That's why I made the change, so that it allowed the city to come up with programs. You know, we went through the economic development review committee. There's a lot of ideas in there. There's a lot of ideas that, a lot of affirmation of the ideas that we were doing and a lot of support for new ideas and new things, whether it's infrastructure grants, like Williams County is doing. You know, those are things, can we, how do we, how do we buy down the cost for developers to come in and grow the pie so that we are, you know, spreading the, spreading the cost on more residents? Again, I see the end goal, right? We've taken, we take a crack at killing economic development, and it doesn't happen. And then we take a crack at it again, and we just repackage the same thing over and over again, saying we want to hear from citizens, but then we don't hear from citizens, and then we we just keep, keep taking swings at it. So again, I get that. Again, I'm going to vote no for it, but again, this this, to me, is a step backwards.
Further discussion. Alderman Olson?
Just one clarification, because the comment has been made twice, that it was voted down to have a public hearing. It was a tie vote that failed to have two public hearings on the same night. We are having a public hearing on the budget on Monday night. So it didn't, it wasn't that we, that council members did not want to hear. It was that we didn't see it was necessary to have two public hearings to talk about one budget.
Mike?
Mayor Mayor Janser, my point is that at this point, I would vote no. I think I agree that it needs to have some public input because we're taking away funding for a group. And so at this point, I feel that public input would be in the best interest of everybody.
Okay.
I'll call the question.
Question's been called. Let us go ahead and vote. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Fuller?
If you guys, I know everybody probably wants to get out of here, right? I have one small thing left. So when we were doing the budgets, the library budget, they had went ahead and cut out a part-time position that's about $20,000 when Zana was trying to get to her flat budget. You know, we've had a lot of discussions over the last few months. It's one of the child programs. It's a, it's a part-time employee for them. And what I would ask here is that as a group, we go ahead and give them the $20,000 that they need to bring this employee or keep this employee on because they're telling us that it will drastically affect them in the children's services area if we cut this part-time position. It's $20,000, Lance. If you don't mind, we'll take another $20,000 off your road, so. Make, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to add back that part-time staff position to the library.
Is there a second? Moved by Fuller, seconded by Samuelson. Discussion. Alderman Olson?
Well, I certainly support this. I don't think that tonight is the night to vote on that because we have a lot of different positions in here that we need to consider, and I think that should be all considered within the budget. So I don't feel comfortable approving it tonight. If it's in the budget, I likely will vote for it on October 6th.
Further discussion. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote. Okay, that motion carried. Is there anything further for today? I guess, city finance director, you have made copious notes. Are you kind of comfortable with where we're ending up? Is there any, anything from your perspective that we need to cover before adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, I think I have a pretty good idea, and because we record these, I can go back and review and listen to it over and over again if needed. What we will do is try to get these changes made so we can have the calculations and have the math so we know where we're at. So again, we have an informed place to move forward on this budget, and hopefully we'll get to a good place where we can agree before October 6th.
Okay, well, thank you for all your work, acting city manager. Anything from your perspective? Okay. All right. I think we might be getting to item number four. Moving seconded to adjourns, all those in favor, say aye. Thank you. We're adjourned.